All right. Let's go live. All right, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is a wonderful Tuesday morning here at the Washoe County Board of County Commissioners. It is May 12th, 2020, and this is our regular meeting. So with that, I would call to order our regular meeting. And with that, Mr. Manager, will you lead us in the pledge? Thank you, sir.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Lucy Chair?
Here.
Vice Chair Marsha Burke Bigler?
Here.
Katie Jung by phone?
Present.
Von Hartung via Zoom?
Here.
Jeanne Herman?
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown?
Here.
Assistant District Attorney David Wattsbale via Zoom?
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, Chief Deputy County Clerk. Sir, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, I appreciate that. All right, so, Mr. Manager, we are on to item three.
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. And so this morning, we do have a number of voicemails, and so I will ask, we will play them one at a time. I have first up, a voicemail from Alfred "Katie" Nepper. So if we could play the voicemail from Alfred and Katie Nepper, that would be great. Hold on, we've got some technical differences. You don't have the voicemail? Can you put the photo? Well, what we'll do is-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I have the email.
Oh, you have the email?
I have the email and-
Okay. It got put in his voicemail.
Tech Services has a photo.
Okay. So we have a photo, and that will be submitted to the record. And then, Madam Clerk, if you could read the email into the record, please.
Okay. It says, "On Tuesday, April 28th, 2020, the county commission heard an email from Jessica Sisteros, Safe Embrace, in regards to their property on Ponderosa Drive, which was part of the Sparks SOI. We live on Ponderosa Drive and were unable to access Zoom to give a response. Contrary to Mrs. Sistero's email, no one is opposed to the work Safe Embrace does for the community. The issue is simple. Prior to the City of Sparks inappropriately allowing a single residence to be converted to a multifamily group care facility, everything was legal in our neighborhood with Safe Embrace operating as a group home. Sparks, by its own admission, made multiple errors in allowing this to happen. Their fix was to finally give improved properties in the SOI back to the county. The City of Sparks now claims all relevant code and zoning issues, including past approvals, are not their responsibility and are now the county's problem." They specifically told us that. "In the meantime, the residents on Ponderosa, a private dead end drive with six homes on each, on an acre each, on the north side, and seven on the south, two of which are on half an acre, have a spot-zoned multifamily group care facility with poor-maintained grounds, a noisy dog kennel, daycare training facility, increased traffic and deteriorated roads you contend with. The fact that we are protesting this multifamily group care facility, which was erroneously approved and absolutely, has absolutely nothing to do with the emotional responses by Safe Embrace, but everything to do with proper planning and zoning. Attached is a picture taken on 4/29/20 of the home showing a big dirt pile present for months, trash cans still on the street from five days prior, not unusual, trees dead from lack of water, lawn full of weeds, and indiscriminate parking in which, in what used to be a lawn area. It is most unfortunate a neighborhood with pride of ownership is not only subjected to a multifamily 18-occupant facility and physical ICE or, but also verbal abuse for wanting the neighborhood to be just that, a neighborhood." And that is signed.
Alfred and Katie Nepper. Great, thank you. All right. So next, we have a voicemail from Ann Marie Grant. So we'll play the voicemail from Ms. Grant, so.
5/12/20, county commissioners' meeting, agenda item three, Ann Marie Grant for the record. "I cannot believe the number of officer-involved shootings you have had in your county in this past year. Four deadly shootings in the past few months, two in the past week alone. My question is, why is a man who was shot nine times little over a week ago up at par with a $10,000 bail? I think he should still be in a hospital, you know, getting proper medical attention. Forgive me for doubting Navcare and the sheriff's office are ensuring this man is protected from sickness and infection. I'll remind you all about NRS 211.020, that is your job as well. My brother only died begging for his life and to be taken to a hospital while he was in the custody of Washoe County Jail. The deputies and medical staff waited 10 minutes before starting CPR. So yeah, I have my doubts about the adequacy of medical treatment provided to the inmates. It's time for you as elected officials to demand transparency from local law enforcement and from DA Chris Hicks when it comes to these killings by officers. For your information, there have been 75 people who have died during interactions with police in Washoe County since the year 2000 that are known. It's time for change. It's time for you to be the people who make this happen. Thank you."
Okay. And next, we have a voicemail from Daniel Purdy.
County Commissioners Meeting, 5/12/2020, item three. Daniel Purdy, for the record, brother of Thomas Purdy, hogtied by Reno PD and smothered to death by sheriffs at the jail. Are you not concerned the community members who have been killed by the police in your county for transparency and accountability? The taxpayers foot the bill for body cameras in your county. Why has none of the footage been released from the seven deadly officer-involved shootings, two in the past week alone? You should start asking some questions of the DA. Thank you."
All right. That concludes all our voicemail, all our voicemail public comment for this morning, so we will move on. Do we have any voicemail, I mean, public comment via Zoom this morning? All right, I'm going to ask, and I'll wait just briefly and see if there's any public comment that pops up. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, we're on to item four.
Item number four, Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
All right, Mr. Manager, do you have anything for us this morning?
I do have a few items, Mr. Chair. Number one, I wanted to point out that we're pulling item number 12 from the agenda due to a public noticing error.
Okay.
Secondly, before we get into the consent agenda, I do want to call out and thank Aaron's Furniture for their donation of 40 mattresses to the Our Place development that will open later this month. And also acknowledge Meals on Wheels for additional donation for our seniors' meals to aid in the COVID-19 situation. Thank you to both of those organizations for helping us out. With regards to COVID-19, I just, as a quick update, we are winding down the incident management team that was headed up by Sam Hicks. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank Sam and his team for all of their hard work in helping make sure that this region was ready for the impacts of COVID-19. They did a great job. We now turn our attention to continuing to focus on expanding our testing capacity for COVID-19 in the region. We're working with the state lab and with our hospitals to make sure that we have additional capacity. And just this week, we're expanding our testing beyond the symptomatic populations to include our public safety individuals, so the Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Reno PD, Sparks PD, as well as our REMZA, our hospital and medical workers. We are also deploying kits with elderly care and group home situations because we know they're highly vulnerable to this kind of infection. And our plan is to expand testing into county employees before we begin bringing them back into the workplace, which right now is scheduled for early June, depending on what the governor's orders are. I want to remind the public that even though we have begun Phase One of reopening in the state, we all still have a responsibility to wear the masks, wear appropriate, wash your hands, avoid unnecessary travel, and I'm saying that in advance of the Memorial Day weekend. I know folks are itching to get out of town and go do things, and it's certainly your prerogative to do that. But please stay safe because we need to continue to watch the infection rates and make sure that this, the COVID-19 situation remains under control. And when you do the responsible thing, you're really helping our frontline medical workers and first responders in terms of not subjecting them to additional infection unnecessarily. That's all I have for this morning, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, I appreciate that. First, I have Commissioner Herman send in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I lost count this weekend after about 75 people had called or emailed me from the Pleasant Valley area, and they feel like they aren't getting a chance to really put their opinion out on issue, on the issue that's number 17 on our agenda about the Pleasant Valley subdivision that they're wanting a zoning change on. So they requested that we postpone this until a later date in order to give them a chance to give public opinion. So that's all I have to say. I think that, you know, it deserves a yes, no, or something. So let's discuss that later when we come to that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Madam Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make sure we are still watching what's happening with Wild Creek. I was over there, I drive past there, want to go to church on Sundays, and it was a beautiful day, and there wasn't a soul out on our course. And so I know that the staff is working on getting somebody to come and operate it, and I just wanted to keep our public up to date on what we're doing and where we're going. So if we could get a report as we move through it, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I had to figure out how to unmute. I beg your pardon. The first thing I want to do is to thank Chairman Lucy to who really was the leader in all of Nevada in terms of closing down and enforcing social distancing. And I believe, Mr. Chairman, you have saved lives. This is all speculative because we're in an all-new situation with a novel virus, but the amount of lives, and more importantly, I think we always have to weigh human misery or joy and track it as much as we do the almighty dollar. And I can't tell you enough how much I really appreciate you taking this approach and taking in a lot of heat. But you remember, the silent majority is who we never hear from, and let me be the first to be no longer silent in saying, "Thank you for saving my life. Thank you for reducing any human misery in my life. I have two 84-year-old parents who are part of my bubble, and they will continue to be a priority for the rest of my life, no matter what's going on." Also, the needs to be thanked in all of this is Mr. Manager Brown. You know, who knew how unfortunate it'd be to have a manager who's a subject matter expert about healthcare, telehealth, and to speak all the languages in critical care and critical emergencies? Nobody could have predicted or expected that. But, Mr. Manager, you brought not only your terrific zen approach, I don't know how you do it, probably the way you learn to make it in this world that we know doesn't look like you or me, and your calmness, but most importantly, your subject matter expertise. I think everybody said, "Oh, oh, that's right, this is his background." So, thank you. And then, a special thanks to the Incident Command Team and specifically Adam Mayberry, who's been clear, concise, and has blown above lots of conflicting and competing interests. So that's really, really, needs to be said and needs to be re-said over and over, the amount of misery that we could potentially have went through these last, you know, for me, I've been social distancing three weeks before the rest of everybody else did just from following the data, and again, concerned of those very healthy 84-year-olds. But 84 is, as you can imagine, well, like most Americans, everybody has a pre-existing condition, it's usually BMI, be nice about it. And then, but not my parents do not have high BMI, as I might add. And then, I wanted, I think we need to do a lot more, and it's probably already cooking, so let me put this on the record, I'm not criticizing, and you don't even have to take my idea, I'm just, I just want to put this in somebody's head who's thinking about that. We need a whole lot more outreach and explanation, maybe starting from the governor's office and then coming right on down to us. And that is, people are asking for us to have, to postpone things until we have a public hearing. This is a public hearing, and this is probably how public hearings are going to look until we get a cure or a vaccine. So we really need to do more outreach and explanation for people who feel like they aren't being part of a process or a public hearing process and any oppositions they have, that this is the standard operating procedure for many, many, many months, for here on out. I'm sorry to bring that, the bearer of bad news, but with the hope that comes with that bad news, this will be more actually acceptable for you. Call and leave us a voicemail. Write us all emails. Do the Zoom meeting. Do, you know, there are things, there are far more ways than we've ever availed you to get your opinion and your lobbying, frankly, because every single person who calls us is a special interest group, at a wider reach and much more easier for you. So can we please start reframing things for the public? Who thinks that we're going to just flip the switch and that whole chamber is going to be open, and that's what they believe to be the most convenient? And I don't believe it's be the most convenient. I've been a big advocate that we shouldn't have anything controversial or important before 6:00 PM, because even though we call ourselves a 24-hour town, and I haven't seen that for 22 years I've been here, and it's not very much a 24-hour town anymore. So I would say this is more of an opportunity for them to speak to their local electives and to give us some influence, which is what they do with special interest groups. So that's just my two cents, you're probably already working on it, please don't take it as a criticism. And I do want, if our local electives could just breathe, and the only ones I can make breathe, I can't even make you, I can ask you, is, I think we need to be very careful how we speak to staff during an emergency, because if you haven't noticed, because I've noticed it, and not just staff here, campaign staff as well, everybody is very defensive right now, and I think it's because of that silent scream above our heads, because we are in a very different time that nobody predicted, so therefore, we couldn't really prevent. So this is not a criticism, staff, please don't get defensive. I know you're on it, I know you have a million things, and don't even email me about it. Please just know that that's cooking in my mind, and it's something I wanted to say on the public record so that my constituents, who by the way, are winning in this job right now, not that everything is a competition, but they are, they're doing everything right in District 3. This is just for me to get that out there so people can hear it from me. I'm their electorate, and I'm going to tell them that that is really the reality, and I know it's not what they want to hear, and we are doing everything we can to change that reality, vis a vis not clogging the hospitals. And I want us to talk more about that as well, and I don't know who we engage and who the right speaker is, but one thing in our rollout I wish we did more of, and that's at the national and the state and local level, talk about what happens to people if our hospitals are 100% capacity and how that triage looks. So if you get in a car accident and you are not absolutely Code 1 emergent, you will be sent home until a later date that they can call you to come in there. Just think about that for yourself, and then if you have kids or loved ones, think how that would affect you as well. So there is a real emergency when it comes to these spikes that we know are coming in June, vis a vis how your family and you are treated when you are used to being able to be scooped up by REMZA or a fire department and taken right to the emergency room, and if you have a very bad owie, you are seen. That will not happen. So please, can we restart, and whoever needs to do that, again, not a criticism at all, I think you're doing fabulous, and I know you don't ever hear that, we don't either, by the way, but you don't ever hear that, and I know you've lost a lot of sleep, Mr. Chairman, as well. So I'm going to just ask everybody in our community, and specifically in District 3, you know, give people a little break, a little room, every single person's at their wit end, and the best we can do when everybody is stressed out is to not add to it. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and really, from the bottom of my heart, Mr. Chairman, you are, your heart is gold, and I will love you forever.
Thank you, Commissioner John, I really do appreciate that. Thank you. It means a lot. That does mean a lot. Commissioner Hartung, can you, you hear us? Are you okay now? Can you, how's the audio?
Yeah, it's a little difficult to hear you guys. I can hear Commissioner John perfectly, but the mics are a little low for me, so I, perhaps it's my own device, my own phone.
All right, the floor is yours, sir.
But I'll be brief. I too want to thank you. I know all the hard work you put in into the Phase One of getting many of these non-essential businesses reopened. I got my haircut on Saturday, and it was a model of how things should be done. Everybody was waiting in their cars to be contacted by their barber. The barbers were all masked, and they had, you know, they're sanitizing their chairs and et cetera, and all the surfaces, and it was just, it was quick, it was easy, and I just, I want to thank you again for all the hard work that you put in with the LEAP staff and with others around the state. And I'm looking forward to hopefully coming back with a plan where we might be able to get a few more types of businesses open that really do already practice very, very good measures. And I'm not a, I'm not a body art person, I have no tattoos, but they're already a business that is very conscientious about all of the hygienic needs of themselves and of course, their clients. And so that's just one group that I think could be reopened fairly quickly. And this is a, I agree with Commissioner John, this is a new standard for all of us, and we're going to have to get used to a new normal, but I think we can do it, and just by paying attention to the number of actual hospitalizations. It's important to continue to test, there's no question of that, but we really do, I think, want to concentrate on how many people are actually in the hospital, and look at that number as the real benchmark for what's happening out there. So again, I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner John, Commissioner Hartung, I really do appreciate that. Thank you. I did want to take a minute and share with everybody, first of all, I hope everyone was able to celebrate a beautiful Mother's Day this Sunday with all the special women in your life, that those mothers out there that give tirelessly and through this pandemic have had to alter their lifestyles to either become homeschool teachers or double duty in regards to work and try to manage different things. You know, realistically, you are more than often than not the glue that holds our families together, so we want to thank you and hope you had a wonderful Mother's Day. Secondly, as both the commissioners touted, you know, I want to thank and spend some time thanking the Incident Command Team. It was an opportunity for me to participate and spend some time with our Incident Command Team and with the manager. Sam Hicks and Manager Eric Brown and all of his team up there have been tremendous. They allowed me to participate and utilize that time to really help work through some issues, and if it wasn't for those gentlemen and their ability to respond quickly with the Health District, we would not have been where we are hopefully today and had flattened the curve to a point where we could reopen our businesses this last weekend. And I think it's also been a huge honor for me to participate and work with the LEAP Team, with Chairwoman Kirkpatrick, Chairman Go Kachia from Eureka County, Executive Director Stapleton, Michael Brown, and Betsy Fretwell from the state. Those individuals truly, truly are friends and colleagues, and I really do appreciate all the time, and I've been able to work with those individuals as well. Couple things, you know, obviously, we reopened and we moved into Phase One on Saturday of our reopening, and you know, the big discussion was stay safe to stay open. I did talk to a few business operators, you know, there's quite a few people that were very happy to go get their hair cut, you know, I'm sure Great Clips was jammed from, you know, morning till night, you know, and there was probably, every stylist was open this weekend. But we also opened restaurants and some retail. But, you know, I was a little concerned and little put off, not necessarily put off, but just kind of confused by some of the stories that were shared with me over the weekend by some of the shopping experiences for those individuals. And I think the biggest part of this is that we, businesses are relearning on how to do business, and I think that's the biggest challenge, is how we are dynamic and how we learn to do business in a new norm. What we didn't anticipate is how customers were going to anticipate a new norm, what a customer would want, and what a customer is going to expect. You know, we, here at Washoe County, within, with the help of the Health District and the state, put forward some basic guidelines, but we never anticipated what a customer's going to do. And I think the one thing I want to continue to share with everybody is that you have to be humble, and you have to be dynamic in this, and realize that people are still scared. We still do have coronavirus, we still do have the ability to spike, and that's why we're continuing to say, stay home, stay safe to stay open. And I think when we, as we move through that, we have to be cognizant that people and the general public are still trying to adjust to what a new normal looks like. And so whether they're in a restaurant, whether they're, and I'm speaking to servers, I'm speaking to patrons, I'm speaking to those that are going to retail stores, those people that are working at checkouts, be cognizant that people are still frightened and that they still haven't had a whole lot of time to interact with, you know, maybe their friends or general public for the last six to eight weeks. And this is still a frightening time, so please be cognizant of that and do your best to be friendly to people, because right now, to scream at people, to be frightened, to instill fear, is not going to help us get through this. So that would be my plea to all of the general public out there, whether you're a patron or a business owner, let's just be friendly to each other and try to work through this together, because it is a challenging time, and the only way we get through this is as a team, and as a group, and as a community. So with that, I want to thank everybody who opened on Saturday and maybe had some challenging days, those who are still prepping to open, whether it's today or in the next, in the coming weeks. But remember, we still have businesses that are closed and families that are in dire need, as Commissioner Hartung pointed out, you know, and I think the LEAP Team has not stopped working. We're working on trying to figure out what is those next steps for gyms, what are those next steps for body art and estheticians and youth sports and a number of businesses out there, bars and restaurants and potentially gaming, when that would come back online. And so as we continue to work through that, please be cognizant, please be safe, wear your masks, proper hygiene, social distance, those are the things that are the most effective in this pandemic, and that is the most impressive way that we can move forward. So with that, I want to thank everybody for participating. One thing I do want to ask you, Mr. Manager, is that one question I did get over the week- you, Mr. Manager, is that one question I did get over the weekend is for some of our, you know, we did open golf courses and different things throughout the county, and we have a number of county golf courses. They are worried for some of the private courses, how they would allow for outside congregation for people who are, you know, maybe outside of their club. That may not be golfing, but they may be standing outside on a pickleball, pickleball court. We haven't, I don't know if we've ever really specifically addressed outside congregation. If it's a picnic table or they're outside in fresh air, how we would address that or if we would, if we have any guidelines for that. So something we might want to go back and revisit with our team.
Okay.
In regards to that outside congregation. Also, I did receive an email about this morning, a couple of things for Arrow Creek Parkway and and camping in like Davis Park, some of our county parks. You know, I don't know what, if we want to make sure that we revisit, you know, if we're not allowing camping or if those parks are open. So I did get some emails about Davis Creek Park. And then potentially when when pools may open. So those things, I'm sure will come down the pipeline and we'll have guidelines for those when we get there. But right now, those pools are still not open, but we will work with that as we continue to move forward. And that is it. I have nothing further. Let me see here. I may have. I have nothing else. Do you have anything from anybody else? All right, seeing nothing, we will close on item number four. And we are on to our consent agenda this morning. I have, our consent agenda consists of everything from 5A through 5G2. Is there anything on the consent agenda this morning that any of the commissioners would like to pool for further discussion? Or have anything they would like to talk about? Commissioner, I have a motion for approval.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner, first from the Vice Chair Burke Bigler, second from Commissioner Herman. Any further public comment?
There is public comment from Ann Marie Grant.
All right, can I, can we play that right now?
County Commissioners Meeting 512, 2020, Agenda Item 5E1. Ann Marie Grant for the record, sister of Thomas Purdy, murdered by deputies at Washoe County Jail on 10/4/2015. NRS 11211.360 is great and all, an update on how commissary funds are being spent. But what I think it's time to hear from the sheriff is regarding NRS 211.030 mandate. He had four deaths under his watch in 2019. NRS 211.030 became effective 10/1/2019. The NRS says, "The sheriff shall submit to the board a biannual report that contains aggregated data similar to the information submitted pursuant to the Death in Custody Reporting Act of 2013, Public Law 113-242 concerning the death of prisoners in the county jail and any branch county jail in his or her county during the immediately preceding six months and the circumstances surrounding any such death." So where is this report? My concern with this, why I feel it's so necessary, obviously, is because my brother was killed at the jail. He died and many other people died up at the jail. So this is important. And I think the sheriff needs to get on it and present the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I appreciate you.
Washoe County Commissioners Meeting 512, Agenda Item 5D, Recommendation to authorize the Washoe County DA's office to issue an offer of judgment inclusive of attorney fees and costs in the amount of $50,000 in the case of Mary Lonsby, Washoe County. Just more bad behavior by Washoe County. It's, I'm in support of paying out the lawsuit, but it's sad that the taxpayers have to fund it like they had to fund the lawsuit when my brother was killed at the jail. Thank you.
All right, those are the two voicemails for both and from Ms. Ann Marie Grant for Items 5D and 5E1. I would like to make a quick comment before we call for the vote. I have been to Ms. Grant's concerns. I have been up to the sheriff's office and have met with the sheriff. And he has showed me the policies that he has in place during COVID and what his presentation he also has submitted letters to each of the commissioners in regards to updates on the current COVID situation as that is standard. We have been in and we will have the sheriff present to us. And future meeting in regards to this will be on a future agenda for those watching via Zoom or via TV. So with that, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Without me, without me voting, it seems like.
The chair, but we will, for the record.
Mark me as an aye for that, please. Thank you. All right, we are on to item, we have a block vote this morning and Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have a block vote. I would propose to put into the block vote Items Number 7, 9, 10, and 11.
All right, so Item 7, 9, 10, and 11. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Mr. Manager, will you read those into the the record for us?
Yes, excuse me. Item 7 is a recommendation to hold discussion and give possible direction to staff to conduct a boundary line adjustment to exchange a portion of Washoe County Riverbend property currently mentioned as APN 038-100-34 with portions of adjacent properties currently identified as APN 038-11202, 038-11203, 038-11204, and 038-11212 owned by Riverbend Home, Mobile Home Park and Storage LLC. Authorize Community Services Department staff to publish all required notifications. And if approved, authorize the Community Service Department Director to sign all documents associated with the boundary line adjustment on behalf of Washoe County. Number nine is a recommendation to approve the attached resolution to augment the Health Benefits Fund in the amount of $3.1 million to increase fiscal year 2020 budget expenditure authority for unbudgeted expenses and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments. No general fund impact. And then Item 10 is is a recommendation to, number one, approve the use of general fund contingency in the amount of $5,397,000 and $264,000 of net zero budget appropriations transfers for unbudgeted expenditures for fiscal year 2020. Number two, approve unbudgeted transfers of $3,550,000. If approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget appropriation transfers and unbudgeted transfers. And then Item Number 11 is a recommendation to approve the attached resolution to transfer $3 million from the county's stabilization reserve account into the general fund coronavirus cost center to pay expenses associated by Washoe County to mitigate the effects of the coronavirus pandemic disaster declared on March 2020 and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustment, budget appropriations transfers.
Okay, I have, seeing we have those all read in. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
On any of your items.
Okay, do we have any public comment on Zoom, on any of the block votes? All right, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. I have a motion and a second for the block. All those in, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
But I'm recording you as a yes vote.
I'm gonna leave my system here and I'll rejoin. Just give me one brief second, folks. This happens every once in a while to us. Okay, I think I'm back in there. All right, so we are going to move back on now to Item 6.
Item 6 is a recommendation to approve pursuant to NRS 278.040 and on the recommendation of the Chair, the reapportion, appointment of Francine Doncic to the Washoe County Planning Commission to represent Commission District 3 as an at-large member. District 3 generally includes Sun Valley south of 7th Avenue and east of O'Brien Pass, Dreamcatcher Drive, to fill a term beginning July 1st, 2020 and ending on July 30th, 2024, or until such time as Ms. Doncic no longer serves on the Planning Commission or successor is appointed, whichever occurs first.
All right, thank you, Mr. Manager. So I'm going to go to Commissioner Jung first. Commissioner Jung, do you have any comments in regards to this being that this is your appointment for your district?
I do not. I have known Ms. Doncic, believe it or not, since I was a liaison at the City of Reno, working for Councilman Iasi and Councilwoman Sforaza. And she is a terrific human being and a reasonable evaluator of all things Washoe County. So I wholeheartedly support this and make a special request again to staff that we need to train up our commissioners and other appointees, even on advisory boards, on roleable and span of control and what a hearing actually looks like, which it can't be in and out and all no vote. I know there's other agencies around here that are elected that believe that that is a stellar meeting. To me, that tells me that every open meeting law in the world has been broken and that proper discussion is the only way that you can inform this commissioner vis a vis the official minutes of any meeting that is used to inform us. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. I appreciate that. And I would add to what Commissioner Jung is, is I think I believe that with any of our appointed boards or advisory boards that we have, those individuals, not only do they, should they be trained up in regards to hosting a public hearing, but they do represent each district and had, should have an independent voice, but ought to be, should be communicating with the district, with the commissioner of the district that they're working with. So that there, there is a ongoing conversation back and forth in regards to challenges and processes that may be outside of their purview that may be of help for them when they are in those types of meetings. I think those are, I would, I would make that request to all the planning commissioners or any, or Board of Adjustment or any boards that represent the commission directly. So I know that those sometimes you try to abstain from that in case. So there are the appeal processes, but it is sometimes helpful for those individuals to understand some of the other challenging things that are going on within the community. So. All right, those are my comments. With that, Mr. Manager, do, I mean, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
There is nobody signed in.
All right, do, anybody from Zoom? All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
I have.
Go to her first, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion from Commissioner Jung and a second from Commissioner Herman to reapprue, to reappoint Ms. Francine Doncic to the Washoe County Planning Commission for another term. With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. With all commissioners voting, and I'm there now, and with Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner, and Commissioner Jung voting telephonically in the affirmative. All right, we are on to Item 8. Mr. Manager.
Item 8 is a presentation of the Washoe County Crime Lab Fee Review Study. Today, we have Consultant Russ Branson, who will present the findings via Zoom.
All right, all right, so with that, I will bring Mr. Branson. Mr. Branson, you are here via Zoom. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, and I'm going to show you my, you should be seeing my screen in the presentation.
Great, we can see it and you sound great and we can hear you perfectly. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. And it's, well, it's good to be here with you virtually. I'd rather be there with you in person as we all would, but this is the best we can do right now and hopefully it'll be fun. I want to talk, the purpose of this study, which we started last fall, was to review the process and methodology of the crime lab fee, especially as it related to Reno Sparks in the state, and to recommend any changes in fee methodology to better reflect a fair allocation of costs between the county and other contract agencies. So I'm going to take you through briefly our analysis, it'll, you know, and be happy to answer any questions at the end. But historically, and that includes through this year right now, there are some changes in place, which I'll talk about later. The county has offered three options for for crime lab fee contracts with outside agencies. One is Option A, which you can see there, which includes pretty much anything the crime lab does, including forensic investigation services. Toxicology is always provided separately on a per-test basis. For cities that wanted to have a reduction in costs and didn't think they needed forensic investigation services, they could contract for everything else. And if they needed other investigation FIS services or photo lab, they'd pay per hour or per test or per CD there. And then if a county decided, or a city decided not to contract with the county, they could purchase everything either on a per-test or per-hour basis with no DNA analysis available for that. That that will be changed in this next year. I'll talk about that as we go through this. The total crime lab costs, historically, the county has only charged direct costs for services provided through the crime lab. A few years ago, they would break, they've broken down the forensic investigation services, the FIS services from the non-FIS services. But in total, this year, FY20 adjusted budget is about $5.3 million. One of the recommendations we'll discuss later is that overhead, both the sheriff's office as well as county central services overhead, should be included, that cost as well. But it's not. It adds, you know, about 2.5% to the overall cost, but is a real cost for crime lab services. The current fee setting process, this is a process that I looked at on this, in this study. And the first is to take, you're, you're working with the mid-year budget for the, for following year contract. So you're always just a little bit behind on that. Although it is updated, if there's known data, for example, we, you know, the county knows it's going to add staff. It will include those expanded services in that adjusted budget amount. It then allocates those costs based on a share of submissions. So submission, you know, is basically request for services. There can be, for any particular crime, there may be several submissions. And so it's a very broad measure of use of services. It doesn't measure, you know, the actual amount of time or cost or type of service. It's just base, just a submission. And so those are allocated. They look at them over a three-year period. So you don't have significant, really for a smoothing effect. You don't have a significant up or down from year to year, but it smoothes out over a three-year period. And again, those costs are allocated to, really to all agencies. So there's a large, an allocation that an option, someone choosing Option A would pay that higher amount. And if you choose an Option B, there's a reduction, which for this year's contract, FY20 contract was 35%. It's going to go down to 20% next year. But that cost reduction is a, just a across-the-board 35% reduction for allocated costs. And then lastly, once those costs are calculated, each contracting agency is, is, you know, asked if they want to enter into a contract. They want Option A or Option B or or no contract at all. And with a minimum contract amount of $3,000 for Option A, $1,500 for Option B. So that's the, that's the basic fee setting practice that this, the county has had and what was reviewed here. So recommendations are specifically related to this practice. Submission history, one of the questions are who's, you know, where is most of this, this work being requested from? And as you can see here, over the last, this is the three-year average, over the last three years, 70% of the crime lab submissions were from Reno Sparks in Washoe County. So that's where the majority of work comes. And it's, this is maybe a little difficult to see. Maybe on the big screen, it's easier to see, but it drops off pretty quickly with Douglas Sheriff's Office being the next big one and then dropping down to many other contracting agencies just having maybe one submission. contracting agencies, just having maybe one submission. And then over the last two years, and this is based on a change in tracking methodology, so we can only really look comparably at the last two years of service for FIS submissions. Similarly, most of the submissions were Reno, Washoe County and Sparks, although it's a higher percentage, about 87.3% of FIS submissions were for these three agencies, and which makes sense, they tend to be a very, you know, it's people going out into the field to do the investigation services. So the closer agencies makes more sense that they take most of the services. And as we said earlier, FIS services are the difference between option A and option B contracts. So the allocation of fees, so how, just based on the methodology we talked about and looking at the FY20 adjusted budget, on the left, the pie shows how the, how the costs for crime lab are allocated. As you can see, the biggest allocation is for the City of Reno, which had the most requests for services based on submissions. Washoe County is next, the, in terms of, and then Sparks is out there, although this is, this is actually represents the amount they pay, not the amount that they're allocated, which is really actually just about the same as Washoe County Sheriff's Office. So, but that's the allocation basis. You see this little green pie here, which is county-funded, which means that this is the, these, this is the funding that kind of falls through the cracks or is, or is out, should be allocated but is not. And so on the right-hand side of the pie, the Sparks, there's a subsidy of Sparks, which we'll talk about later, will not happen next year, or not a subsidy, yeah, reduction in their allocation amount for their contract. That's not going to happen in fiscal year 21. This lost due to option B, which means we talked about the 35%, what's been a 35% allocation to FIS, and there's this 35% reduction to B, so they're getting allocated costs, but then if they choose option B, those costs aren't being collected, that's 183,000. Lost due to non-contract, these are allocations to agencies that have used services who then did not enter the contracts with the county for services. And then the state contract, which is looking at their allocation versus the contract they have to pay, and they have a three-year contract. So that's, you know, very broadly, what, when we look at this 973,000 green slice, is county-funded or county subsidies? That's one of the things, that's a big piece that we're looking at in terms of how can we reduce that subsidy. So the goals, and looking, as I talked about, you know, kind of the goal and looking at what should the fees be, how does this work, are there things the county can do to make this more equitable for everyone? And so the goal, one, is to fairly allocate cost of services to agency, and that fairness also extends to the county, that you're not overpaying too much, eliminate county subsidy of voluntary services to outside agencies. So one of the key elements here is the crime lab services provided by the county are done not on a mandatory basis, some are, and those aren't included in the fee allocation, but they're done on a voluntary basis. So these are, this is services other agencies in the state need, they contracted the county to have those services provided, they could contract to other places, they could provide these services themselves, but I think there's been an agreement that this is definitely a much more efficient way of providing those services and maintain the state-of-the-art facility and services. So you want to produce the highest quality of evidence for use in identification and prosecution of crime. The county has done a great job of building a crime lab that has continued to advance with the advancement of technology. So we talked about some changes that were already in process, and I think it's important to note that as I, as I was looking and doing this analysis, several things were already happening. So some of these are kind of included somewhat in my recommendations and some were already happening, so, but have been done, but I think it's important to note that there has been this ongoing effort. One, the elimination of Sparks fee discounts, so that's, they've already been told, no discount in the next fiscal year. Evaluation of dispatch services and the trade for services with Reno, which is ongoing, so even though Reno had the biggest slice of the pie, they don't pay anything because there's this trade that's been in place for, since the early 90s, or maybe 1990 for a long time, that there's, and there's, the studies have shown there's a disconnect between the value of the services provided by the county versus the value of the services, traded services provided by Reno. And so that evaluation is ongoing. There's, there will be an FY21 elimination of all per-test or page you go services, including FIS services for option B, and primarily that is due to the fact that in terms of getting repaid for grants, the county has an issue with these outside revenues coming in for services that are also grant-funded and are eliminating those, that optionality in terms of be, to be able to maintain grants from the federal government. Reducing costs in FIS by shifting to non-sworn personnel, this is already implemented, this is one of the reasons you're getting a reduction in 35% cost for FIS to 20% cost for FIS in FY21. And then, again, addition of OPEB costs or retiree health costs to the fee amounts, again, so this, that's already implemented and just reflects the, you know, the sheriff's office each year looking at what are the full costs of writing this service and changing as needed to do that. So the recommendations from the study, kind of in two different tranches, the first one is a general recommendation, one is to include overhead costs, I mentioned that earlier, increases the total fees by about two and a half percent, and the other is to also to add a capital replacement cost into the cost recovery amount. So we didn't dive too much into that, it is discussed in the study. The county currently has, historically, has replaced and purchased new equipment through, through federal grants primarily, and that has, you know, led that, you know, that's, that's the kind of the allocation or the way of getting that money, and we don't put it in the fees. But there's two issues to that, one is there are, there's a lot of equipment that is not funded through grants and needs to be recovered from a capital basis in the fee, as well as just the potential for what if those grants, you know, dry off, especially, I'd say especially now, as we're getting into both the, you know, federal, state, local stress on budgets, that could be an issue. And to begin shifting, and one thing I noted here, this is before COVID-19 issues as well, but, you know, just, you can't probably hit too hard your contracting agencies, many of whom are, even before COVID-19, were experiencing economic and budget issues, and so this may have to roll in over several years. So some of the targeted recommendations. The first one, and this is, you know, this is one that you have to look at separately, but to eliminate the service trade disparity with Reno. So this could result in the renegotiation or elimination of the 1990 services agreement. So that's a big, big deal. I know the county's been looking at it, there have been ongoing discussions, but to figure out a way, and there's to, and there's some optionality within the study itself that talks about some other things to at least think about, require Sparks to pay full contract costs, that's in process and will happen next year, you know, reduce county subsidy of non-contract agencies, and I think this may increase cost to current contracts, but I think this is also in process, for example, reducing the subsidy from 35% to 20%, and looking at other ways of making sure that counties that you're including your allocation are actually counties that are seriously considering contracting with, or cities and other agencies seriously consider contracting with the county. Reduce subsidy of option B agencies, and that may require a separate allocation of FIS and other submission costs, that's one of the things we talked about, maybe you split those out, who really uses FIS services, who really uses other services, and split the allocations out. And then reduce the subsidy to state contract to the extent that you're able to work that out with the state. So the impact of doing, of these, implementing these recommendations, very broadly, that, you know, it's a, it will be a reduction in costs with Washoe County, an increase in costs with Reno, and, you know, whatever, there's a delta, there's an additional cost if you, you know, if, if you're, if you now do your own dispatch or pay for that separately, there may be an increased cost there, this isn't shown here, just looking at the crime fees, Sparks will pay more, option B will, contracts will probably have to pay a little more, and there could be something with, with option A contracts with different allocations, but this is just showing, you know, basically what we're looking at is reducing county costs, there'll be a primary impact on Reno and Sparks with some impacts on some other state or other agencies contracting with the county as well. So that's a very quick run through the, through this study and the recommendations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Russ, thank you so much. I think that was a very, very good, brief presentation in regards to the crime lab study, which is a very complex topic. In our packet, there is a number of numbers, and I think that you've done a great job digging really deep into a topic that I know many commissioners have been asking about since, for the last, at least for the last five years since I've been on this board, to have a discussion about, and I think this brings forward a number of potential discussions in a very apt time in regards to how we continue to look at budgets moving forward. So before I open it up to the commissioners for discussion, we do have public comment signed in from Mr. Tom Daly via email, so we'll take public comment at this time. So Madam Clerk, if you'll read Mr. Daly's email into the record for us, please.
I certainly will.
Thank you.
The Washoe County Crime Lab Fee Review by the Municipal Resource Group, LLC, before you confirms two earlier reports by your county auditor in 2015 and the IXP Corporation in 2016 by recommending the dissolution of the 1990 dispatch forensic services in a local agreement between Washoe County and the City of Reno. You have a fiduciary duty to your taxpayers to end this egregious and wasteful spending via Washoe County subsidy to the City of Reno, estimated $560,000 per year by your county auditor. Current revenue challenges to Washoe County, like the last, are likely to last through 2020, compels you to conserve revenue now. Discussions today should be followed by an agenda item for possible action at your next meeting to give Reno the required 90-day notice of termination of this interlocal agreement and move ahead with current efforts to stand up the Washoe County Sheriff's Dispatch operation to provide for those services countywide while offering Reno the same fee-for-service forensic capability the county does for dozens of other northern Nevada jurisdictions. I urge you to do so. Thank you, Thomas G. Daly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
There is nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there anybody via Zoom this morning that would like to make comment for the public on item eight? Give us a second, takes a, we have a little bit of a lag there. All right, I'm not, I'm not seeing any, and we'll keep looking throughout our commissioners' comments, and if somebody does raise their hand, we'll come back to that public comment. So I'm going to open it for discussion to the commissioners at this time. Are there any discussions in regards to this? I, I think staff is obviously looking for direction today about, based upon the recommendations that were provided by the consultant. So Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I want to also let, let our staff know how much I appreciate this crime lab fee review. It's been something that's on our agenda for some period of time to look at and to get the information, and I appreciate having all this information. I think it's something that we need to take a close look at and then make some decisions on as to what changes we want to propose to them. And I have several ideas, but I'd sort of like to hear what everybody else thinks. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Commissioner Hartung, I know you have, you've had a number of these discussions as well, so Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this has, this has been on our radar. In fact, when Commissioner Brickbickler and I originally were elected in 2012 and seated in 2013, Sheriff Haley came to our commission then and showed us the, the divide between what we were getting in services versus what we were paying. So this is, this is, in my opinion, long overdue. I'm hopeful that the City of Reno and the City of Sparks are both fully aware of this. This is not really about Washoe County, though, this is about the sheriff's office and his ability to run the crime lab effective and efficiently, and, and this is a much-needed resource in our community, as, as was outlined in the staff report, of how many counties in the state of Nevada utilize our crime lab, plus many counties in California. So, I mean, this is a, this is a renowned crime lab, it's a, it's a wonderful resource to the entire community, but it really does need to be self-sustaining. So I'm, I'm very appreciative of this and look forward to moving forward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman, you had comments as well?
I totally agree with Commissioner Hartung, and it has been a long time waiting to be done, so I'm anxious to see it come up on the agenda.
All right. You know, Commissioner Jung, do you have any comments that you'd like to add on this topic?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a, a pretty basic question. Who, from what fund does the crime lab, is it paid through? Is it through the sheriff's office budget or the general fund?
Mr. Manager?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Is there anybody, do we have?
I see Christine.
Okay, Christine, Assistant County Manager Valetich, I'm sorry, do you want to respond to that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, the crime lab is part of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office budget, and it is part of our general fund budget. So it's included in the general fund.
That doesn't, that doesn't help me at all. The sheriff gives a certain amount of budget, and then we fund a lot of things that we never even knew we funded as a general fund for these different elected department heads. Of whom pays the crime lab fee? Through whom's budget does it go through?
It goes through the sheriff's office budget, which is one of the largest, I think the largest department in the county, and it is part of our general fund, that is budgeted within the general fund, as are many other departments as well.
So, and I, I think I'm just.
So let me answer the question. Let me ask it a different way. Who has stamp of control over that budget?
Ultimately, the county commissioners approve the budget.
The overall budget, but then he allocates and determines where he would like to spend the stack of money we give him, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, within his budget, yes. That is correct.
So he needs to be here, he should have been informed on this, he should have been bringing this to us as to how he sees this and what to do with this, does need an increase or a decrease in his funding. Again, I think we're chasing the wrong tail here, the elected department head is responsible for spending the allocation we give them and also advocating for, or against whatever we choose to pay. I get that we ultimately set everybody's budget, absolutely, but bottom line, he has the stamp of control and the responsibility, this is not, this is, this is great background information, but we need a whole lot more input from him, because I, this goes to the next question. Whom is the only entity that, that this investigator looked at that does not pay the crime lab fee?
Currently, it is the City of Reno, because we are in an interlocal agreement on an exchange for crime lab services, for dispatch services.
Right, I know that, I know that, I know that. I just said, who's not passing us, I've been here for 13 and a half years, I definitely know that. So Reno is the only one that doesn't pay a fee for service based on an ancient agreement where their lawyers were better than ours, so it's good to know. So, here's what I would think, though. After the sheriff's office weighs in, perhaps now is the time, more than ever, that we enact the government services pact, and if anybody asks us why, we say, because we cannot resolve our differences and we do not believe this is fair and equitable, so therefore, rather than subsidizing one agency, we want every member of all of Washoe County to be subsidizing each other. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. My comments are, one, I want to go back to some of the detail that was provided in the study. Under the recommendations that were provided by MRG, our consultant, we have, there was a list of eight overall recommendations. I'd go back to, I would point out number five in the staff report, which would be capture full cost of services. I think that whether, whether or not the sheriff chimes in in regards to specific who should pay and who shouldn't pay, I feel that. who should pay and who shouldn't pay, I, I feel that all departmental costs and county-wide overhead should absolutely be added in. Um, that should be an immediate change, that's low-hanging fruit. And then the capital replacement costs, you know, that's just a fee for running the building, uh, fee for running, changing the lights, the power, I mean, capital overhead is built into all my costs and everything that I do. I think those should be, should be built in there, and then the capital replacement to replace those, the, the, the equipment in the lab is very expensive equipment. Um, so I think those should be amortized over certain periods of time, the life of those machines and, and whatnot, and I think those schedules should be put together for the capital. If they're not, and if they're not being built into the fees, they should be immediately. I think that, in my opinion, is low-hanging fruit. Um, how, I also agree with Commissioner Jung that we take this study back. I, I am also in agreement that I think that, you know, we've always said that, you know, you, you should be paying, pay to play. It is, um, everybody should pay their fair share for the services that they use. It shouldn't be this quid pro quo of shake hands based upon a 1990 agreement. Um, however, I think what should happen is that, um, what the sheriff thinks is the best, best way to move forward in regards to how we dissolve the interlocal agreement to provide for, you know, some equity amongst all the regional partners. And, and like I said, I go back to the comment that it's now more prudent than ever that we do that based upon budgets. Um, and it will give us a little bit more guidance about how we move forward in the future in regards to, um, making some of those adjustments, and hopefully we'll never get into these wound-up type, um, very obscure agreements again in regards to how we do business. Um, I think that is where, and one of the biggest challenges for me, I would, in my opinion, I would move forward to something more likely to the, very, very similar to, um, maybe, uh, an option A, in my opinion, um, but I will leave that up, and I really would like to hear from the sheriff, um, if they're, if they have, if they've weighed in on this and, and get their opinion, um, in what they would like to do. I know he's had, we've had some basic conversations, but now that we have some detailed information here, I think that's important. So, with that, Madam Vice Chair, I have you sign back in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, as, as we look at the recommendations here on page 23, I would simply say I'm in support of all these recommendations, and I've had a number of conversations with the sheriff, and as we've gone through this whole process, and, um, I think the sheriff, I agree, we need to get the sheriff to say, okay, I support all of these recommendations to us also, so we know where they come from. I do think it's important to point out that I don't think it's the sheriff that terminates the agreement with the, uh, city of Reno, it would be Washoe County. The commission, this commission is responsible for having that, not this particular commission, but the commissioner, commission board was responsible for getting that agreement in place, and I think the commission board needs to be responsible for removing it. I would say that the circumstances are vastly different today than they were then. At that time, it was true that the city of Reno was providing essentially all of our, um, our, all of the services that, that were a fair trade, um, and so the dispatch services, they provided everything at that time. That is not the case anymore. The sheriff's office pretty much provides dispatch services, and so we need to resolve this problem, and hopefully we can resolve it amicably with the city of Reno, but I think we have to move forward with this. It's, we've waited way too long not to, to continue moving forward with this, and so that would be my recommendation, is that we ask the sheriff to come back and clarify for us, um, is, is he in fact totally supportive of these eight overall recommendations on page 23, and what else he would like to see changed as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Hartung, I know you had another comment you'd like to make.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I do, and one of the things, one of the options I don't see, and this is not, I'm not suggesting that we absolutely do this, but I think it should be laid on the table, and that is that we cull the crime lab out of the sheriff's office and make it an enterprise fund where, um, everybody pays to play, regardless of, of whomever they are, and then that way, um, everything is basically due to the crime lab, uh, and, and maybe, and I don't know how it's administrated, but I know as an example, and I'm not using this as the, as the firm example, but many states, um, the, the crime labs are funded by the state, they're not funded by the counties. I'm not suggesting that we ask the state to do that, but what I do think is, is that at least we lay the option on the table of it becoming, uh, a standalone agency that answers to no law enforcement agency. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Hartung. All right, um, any further comments by any of the, the commissioners? I think that, um, you know, an amicable, uh, dissolution of the, the, is kind of what I'm hearing from all of the commissioners that we move forward, but we'd like to hear the, the sheriff's office chime in on, on his specific, uh, opinion in regards to the study and the results provided. Um, I think there's been lots of options to the manager, um, and his staff, and I think they'll go back and, and assess this out with all those individuals that are participating. So with that, I'll look for a motion to accept the report. I have a motion from Vice Chair Brickbigler, do I have a second? Second from Commissioner Herman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously, uh, with all commissioners voting, both Commissioner Hartung and Commissioner Jung voting in the affirmative via phone. All right, we are on Mr. Manager, I believe, to now item 13.
Yes, item 13 is a recommendation to acknowledge status report, impossible direction to staff on the county manager's recommended fiscal year 2021 budget, and direct the county manager to return to the Board of County Commission with a tentative and final budget incorporating the approved county manager recommendations for adoption at a public hearing to be scheduled on May 19th, uh, 2020. So, uh, presenting this morning is, uh, via Zoom, uh, is Assistant County Manager Christine Valetich, along with Lori Cook. Before they come on, I will just make the comment that I'm, I'm sure everyone is aware that Governor yesterday, um, instituted or declared a fiscal state of emergency here in the state of Nevada, uh, with 700 to $900 million deficit. Uh, and I would point out, that is for the time period that ends June 30th. Today, we're talking about fiscal year 2021, which starts July 1st. So the numbers you're hearing about, uh, are for the year that we're, we're closing up with the state, but suffice it to say that it's going to be a challenging year ahead. Um, we, uh, I think you will hear, uh, in, in this presentation, uh, that we're following through with many of the financial mitigation, uh, recommendations that were made when Ms. Valetich and, uh, Cook presented to you, uh, in March. And with that, I'll turn it over to Christine to, um, make the presentation, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes, that's fantastic. Thank you, Manager Brown. Um, Ms. Valetich, uh, we have you on the phone. Would you like to take it away and start?
Uh, yes, Greg, can you hear me okay?
We hear you perfectly, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. I'd like to, um, go to slide two, I think Lori is dropping, thank you very much. Um, just briefly, today's agenda, this presentation, we're going to give a brief update on the budget process, we'll, we'll talk about our assumptions, uh, going into the recommendations for fiscal year 21, and then we will go through the fiscal year 21 county manager's recommended So just a, kind of a visual of the budget timeline, uh, we start in January with our mid-year budget review and preliminary outlook that we presented to the board. Typically, um, the capital improvement program committee, um, meets and reviews all the requests of the departments. Uh, in February, revenue and cost estimates are developed, um, and then in March, we meet with departments and we, um, at that point, have a tentative budget in place. And I mention that because this year is a little bit different than every other year, because with the COVID-19 pandemic hitting in mid-March this year, uh, we have, as an organization, had to do a complete 180. Most of our revenue assumptions in the tentative budget, um, were no longer valid at that point. Um, and as you know, um, in April, April 14th, we, was the last time we spoke with the board, and we gave a presentation on the financial impact, um, to flatten the curve, uh, the financial impact on the county. And so then here we are today, uh, with the recommended budget, kind of a quick turnaround there to, uh, bring the recommended budget, and then we will hold the required public hearing next Tuesday, May 19th, uh, and hopefully have that budget adopted. Um, and then this here is just kind of a little bit more detail, um, on what I just mentioned. I'm not going to go through all of these, but it gives you an idea of, of the process that, um, staff, um, countywide are a part of in developing the budget. Okay, so fiscal year 2021 budget assumptions. Um, you know, we talked again on April 14th, uh, about the economic outlook. Um, we didn't have a theme yet, uh, our theme now is unprecedented. I know everybody's been hearing that a lot, but it, it truly is the case. Um, updated information on, uh, unemployment is, um, a bit disturbing nationally. 22.7 million jobs that we had gained over the last decade of recovery since 2009, since the Great Recession, have been wiped out in a matter of weeks. Uh, in April alone, 20.5 million jobs were lost, and we're currently at 33.5 million unemployment claims filed, and that's in just a six-week period from mid-March through April. That's three and a half times more than, um, the unemployment claims that were filed during the entire Great Recession. The unemployment rate nationally now is somewhere between 14.7 and 19.7. When this data came out last week, they qualified it by saying that, you know, it's dependent on how, um, quote-unquote, absent for work for other reasons, uh, claims were classified. So, uh, on the low end, 14.7, on the high end, 19.7. Um, and then, uh, yesterday, we, uh, got some news from the, uh, the state, from Dieter, uh, the Department of Employment, Training and Rehabilitation, that for the week ending April 25th, Nevada's insured employment rate was 19.9%. That's the highest rate in state history. Um, and then looking a little bit deeper into that data, we see that Washoe County's total unemployment claims were 34,574, and I believe that was through May 2nd. Um, you know, it goes without saying, when people are not employed, consumer spending goes down. Um, we don't have April numbers yet for that, I think that's going to be coming later this week, um, but for the month of March, uh, was down 7.6%. Um, and again, you know, this really started to hit in mid-March, so I wouldn't count that as a full month's worth of data, really. Um, durable goods, uh, during that period were down 16.1%, but of course, non-durable things like groceries, toilet paper, and et cetera, we, were up, and we all know that there was some hoarding going on. But needless to say, this, even though it wasn't a, for a full month of impact, it was the biggest decline since records on consumer spending have began in 1959. And that's a long time ago. Um, as far as gross domestic product for the first quarter, so that's the quarter ended in March, um, that contracted by an annualized rate of 4.8%, so, uh, our longest post-war U.S. economic expansion, um, which again began in 2009, is over for all intents and purposes now. And quarter-two GDP decline is expected to be 34% or higher. I've read some economists that even put that number higher. Pending home sales index plunged almost 21% nationally in March. Um, housing starts were down 22% in March, um, some states completely shut down construction. Building permits, which we always watch because that's an indicator of future construction, were down 6% in February and another 7% in March, and manufacturing activity had slowed to the lowest level since 1974. And then again yesterday, as Eric already mentioned, that our governor, Sisalak, declared a state of fiscal emergency. So if that were not enough, we also have some continuing concerns, right? Initially, our concern was, how do we make it through June 30th? And we have put some measures in place, um, we will go through those in a moment, uh, but now the concern is, how do we survive the next 12 to 18 months? Uh, we could have prolonged sales tax impacts, we've talked about this before, Nevada's economy is still very dependent on tourism and gaming, uh, it puts us at a higher risk for economic impact, uh, if people can't travel or are afraid to travel, and, um, a lot of our sales tax revenue does come from tourism. People shop when they go on vacation. Property tax impacts, we haven't really, um, seen that hit so much yet, um, and Lori will kind of take you through the projections there. Uh, we've had, you know, a, a great, uh, housing market, and basically, construction has been robust, so new development, um, is coming on to the tax roll from the last year, which will help us, but if that starts to slow down and home sales start to slow down in the area, longer term, it could affect property values, assessed values, and then in turn, property tax revenues. Um, you know, with declining revenues and use of our cash reserves, uh, we're, we're concerned about cash flow impacts, uh, and the general fund, um, is shouldering, uh, much of this, or most of this burden, and so it just won't be, uh, sufficient to shore up deficits should they occur in other funds. We have some pending litigation that we're still concerned about, and then the state, um, has said that they're going to have a special legislative session, probably this summer, um, and when that happens, we're always concerned about possible unfunded mandates and funding reductions from some of those, uh, very important revenues that get passed through to us for the, from the state. Um, and then lastly, um, always concerned about any impact on the county's credit rating going forward, our borrowing ability and, um, possible exposure because we have some other entities, uh, bonds that the county holds the, uh, general obligation on. So, the, as I mentioned, the general fund, um, is going to see the largest impact here, and, um, the numbers are, are pretty staggering for us. For fiscal year 2020, which is going to end June 30th, we're anticipating a revenue loss of close to $15 million, and then almost $10 million in emergency response costs, so 24.6 million in total, estimated. And then going forward into fiscal year 21, we're projecting a revenue loss of 37 and a half million, ongoing costs of 3 million, estimated, uh, for another 40.5 million, 40.4 million, so total impact over 15 months, $65 million. And it's, that's very significant for us. Throughout this crisis, um, as, and we talked about last month, the county's goals have been threefold, to maintain services. We're focusing on priorities to support public health, um, communicating well, uh, reducing services in some areas, we've had to do that. Um, for example, libraries have been closed, and some other, um, county facilities have had to close during this period, but we've also had the goal to keep our employees working because we know with this high unemployment that is happening, uh, across the country and across our region, we don't want to contribute to the problem if we don't have to, and we need those employees to, now more than ever, to provide those important services. So we have redeployed, uh, employees, uh, who, um, maybe can't work from home, or their areas, um, don't have as much work right now, or helping out, um, health district and, and other areas. Um, and we've been applying a unified approach, we're including the, of course, the Board of County Commissioners in that management, we've been having conversation with labor and also our community. Lastly, and this is an important one, we want to use our reserves wisely, you know, reserves basically are your savings account, and we are applying quite a bit of that to, in the short term at least, to help us through this period. Um, we've taken early action, but we cannot cut reserves too low, um, because they may have to last for several years, and they're also required for cash flow, frankly. Um, this is the chart that I show you every year, um, and, um, this year, it's, it's, uh, we've got a big, uh, update to it. So if you just, uh, follow along for a moment and look to the left of the chart, 2007, that is, uh, the period where we began going into the Great Recession, and the orange or reddish line, which says uses, those are, really can be thought of as expenditures, and the blue being revenue. And you can see in 2007, the county already was spending more money than revenue. And you can see in 2007, the county already was spending more money than revenue coming in. And as we progressed into the recession, and I will mention the Great Recession period was prolonged. It took a while to get to the bottom there in 2011, and I guess '13 even went down a little bit further. It took a while, and we had to reduce expenditures significantly to keep up with falling revenues. And then if you go to the period 2014 through 16, we have a period there where revenues were just a little bit higher than expenditures. So the county was able to build back some reserves, some fund balance. And then in 2017, the flooding disasters hit. So there again, we used reserves. We spent down our stabilization reserve of $3 million and some others to respond to that disaster. And then in '18 and '19, you know, we've entered that period of growth. As I mentioned, you know, robust construction, countywide, full employment. And we can see there that the blue line was quite a bit above the red. So that's where we were building fund balance. And then that takes us to 2019 and '20, sorry, '20 and '21. '20, you can see that sharp uptick in expenditures. Those are the emergency response costs that we're incurring right now for the COVID-19 pandemic, and our reduction in revenue. And then you can see, projected for fiscal year '21, we are projecting a small decrease in expenditures, but a sharper decrease in revenue. So we will be using quite a bit of reserves and fund balances to get us through that fiscal year, or at least that's what's being recommended. So just taking you back to fiscal year 2020, which will be ending this June, so a little over a month from now, we've put in a hiring freeze and also a purchasing freeze. We've instituted a review process to look at purchases and any hiring requests outside of that. Only mission-critical items will be approved. We're not carrying forward any purchase orders or expenditures into fiscal year '21. We are utilizing fund balance and other transfers, and we are not asking for any reductions to employee compensation or workforce through June 30th. And so you can see the pie chart there. It shows all the different measures that we're taking. General fund funded 37.8%. That includes 9.3 million estimated use of fund balance, reducing our transfer to the capital improvement program for projects that hadn't started yet this fiscal year, using the remaining contingency budget in the general fund of $5.4 million, $700,000 of marijuana revenue, transferring $3 million from the risk management fund over to the general fund, some 1.6 million in savings estimated from vacant positions, another 1.6 million in purchasing savings, and then reduce previously increase, previous increase to ending fund balance. So that was, we had actually budgeted an increase in fund balance of about $756,000. So that also obviously is not available. So total financial impact mitigation measures of $24.6 million. And then here, you can see it in a little bit more detail by the numbers. You can see the top part here, total revenues, $14.9 million loss. And then in the middle column there at the bottom, once we estimate our total sources and uses, a deficit or a decrease in general fund balance of $9.3 million. Okay, all right. And I'm going to stop here, and I'll have Lori Cook, our budget manager, take you through the fiscal year 2021 county manager recommended budget.
Okay, Ms. Valich, Ms. Cook, before you get started, I do have Commissioner Harken to have a question.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Valich, I appreciate the presentation. So I have a question slash comment, and then another question. So first question is, is the unemployment numbers that you cited earlier, are those based on unemployment filings? Like the 14 versus the 19.7? Is that the number of people that have actually filed for unemployment from the workforce?
Yes, we've had 33.5 million people nationally file for unemployment. And then within the state of Nevada, the number of unemployment claims for jobs that are insured by unemployment insurance is increased to a 19.9, equivalent of a 19.9% unemployment rate.
Okay, yeah, and what I would submit to you, this is very much like when I was in business for myself in the last downturn. I was not eligible for unemployment. And I think that the number sadly is much higher. There's a lot of people out there. I have a young friend who is a photographer, and he's not eligible to file for unemployment benefits. So I think the number is higher than we think. So that's just, it was a question slash comment. And then have we calculated, Ms. Valich, the amount of FEMA reimbursement that Washoe County would be due for all of the COVID expenditures that are able to be reimbursed by the feds?
Thank you for that question. And I just want to say, I do agree with you. You're absolutely right. Unemployment rate is probably higher than that, but it is very difficult to count those folks, unfortunately, that aren't eligible. As far as federal reimbursements, we are tracking all of our expenditures for the emergency response to COVID-19. And we are working with the state Department of Emergency Management to apply to FEMA. That application hasn't been completed yet. They are, the state is actually working on a statewide application to FEMA. Should our expenses be allowable? You know, if FEMA agrees that they're allowable expenses, we potentially could be reimbursed up to 75% of those calls.
Okay, and of those costs, okay, I appreciate that. Of those costs, so we're working backwards through the state. Does the money come to the state, and then it's pushed down to each one of the individual counties?
No, it's just the application process goes through the state. They review it, they help us work with FEMA. And then once FEMA actually is ready to make a reimbursement, I believe it comes directly to us.
Okay, great. And from the 2017 and those years when we were dealing with flooding, have we been reimbursed any of that FEMA money yet?
We've received a little bit of it. I believe we claimed over $7 million, and I think we received just over $1 million. And actually, that's part of the fund balance that we're going to be using now. So just say, it typically takes quite a process and quite a long time to receive reimbursements from FEMA.
Of course. And, yeah, this is where my disappointment lies with the federal government of the... Well, I'll just leave it at disappointment. I have to be very careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Commissioner Jung, did you have any questions for Ms. Valich before we move on to Ms. Cook?
I do, Mr. Chairman, and it's to echo Commissioner Harken. I mean, I don't think any of this is news to us. We all knew this was coming, and staff and the managers have done a great job keeping us informed. My question is, since we are so unlike the feds, and so is the state, these are the "we can't print" money, they can. So again, this is lopsided, and this needs to be fixed in this new normal, which is a word, I hate that word because that's from 2007, if you should know. Here's another one I don't love: "do more with less." I'm sure the staff, too, wants to bang their head against the wall when they hear that. So again, we have to work with the only person we know who has a relationship with the president, and that is Congressman Amade, and see what he is doing to raise hell for us, to get us first in line and paid, and to change the way this funding system works. That federal money is our money, and to be told otherwise is wrong. We all pay income taxes. That is not the government's money. That is not the president's money. That's our money. And they need to get in the business of reimbursing much quicker. I would say what we should require is they reimburse us within the amount that it takes for us to stay operational with money, which I think is 30 days. They have to reimburse us in 30 days. Or we don't pay federal income taxes anymore, guys. Because I am very frustrated by this situation, and I believe this has been very unfair. Now, I'm not, I don't want to get into any partisan nonsense right now because, I mean, frankly, I'm really not a partisan. I'm a scientist, and all I care about is Washoe County and the citizens up here. So if we can't print money, and they're not going to change that, here's the next thing we got to get really good at as commissioners. And it was something we had to do back in 2007 through 2010. And unfortunately, we flipped away from it. I'm also guilty. So I'm putting myself in the barrel of people that need to be trained back up. And this is, now, since we have to be so critically focused on our mission, let's make sure every time a constituent tells us, "You know what the county ought to do?" We also say to them, "Okay, that's a great idea and a terrific program. What do you propose I cut to put this through?" And we need to ask each other that, too, when we put stuff on the agenda, asking for new things. "Okay, that's fine with me, I'll support it 100%, but I also want to be fair and transparent to the public, and we will also be cutting X, Y, and Z." We really have to get in that mindset. And I'll only be here for two more years, not even two more years. And I'm going to tell you something. Let's both, let's all of us remind each other of that because getting away from that is a recipe for disaster, and now we are in a disaster. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. All right. Ms. Cook, if you want to move on to your presentation, please.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you great, thank you.
Okay, perfect. So the recommended budget for all funds, as most of the commissioners you can remember from prior years, when we submit the budget to the state, it's for all of our funds, so our governmental funds and proprietary funds. And that total is $714.6 million, less than fiscal year '20's final budget. And obviously, you know, we know what's going on. You can see that fairly large reduction appropriations in the general fund, which is more than, or I'll go to the next slide, but which is the largest operating fund for the entire county. And appropriations are expenditures, what's budgeted for contingency, and transfers out. So how do these lie, or how do they all become? How do I turn that previous chart into, what does it look like? Where we can see the general fund at 50% and special revenue funds at 28%. And those are all special revenue funds combined. So that would be things like the Health District and Child Protective Services and the Rhodes Fund, and all of those separate funds are in there. Then we have capital funds, debt service, enterprise and internal service funds. So this is the pie chart quantification with percentages, if you will, of total appropriations, which is very similar to prior years. Within, as the largest operating fund, we do, we focus a lot on general fund budget. And for this impact in particular, when we're talking about C-Tax, C-Tax revenues go into the general fund. And so there are some special revenue funds, like I just mentioned, Child Protective Services and Indigent. There are some special revenue funds that receive a tax value, an ad valorem rate of a penny, two pennies, three pennies, whatever it happens to be. C-Tax goes into the general fund, and so every, the impact of C-Tax directly impacts 100% in the general fund. So based on next year's estimated revenues and sources, which is almost $340 million, property tax is at 56%, and consolidated tax is at 27%. And so, because a couple of years ago, we started noticing property tax being closer to 50 or 49, and consolidated tax getting upwards of 33% of, you know, how the total revenue is distributed or it comes in. And we're anticipating, because of that reduction in consolidated tax, it will be around the 27% mark of total revenues within the general fund. Property tax, this is the, we do update this every year just to show the ups and the downs, and, you know, the steep decline over the recession, and then the moderate increase based on abatement or those tax caps. The purple, as a reminder, anybody who might not have seen it, represents the property tax abatement. So that is the amount based on the assessed valuations, but it's not collected. And so the taxpayer does not pay that. And then the blue represents the billing or what we receive for property taxes. So next year, the tax cap limits, the residential is at 3% and the non-residential is at 5%. So that blended rate is about 4%. New construction is going to increase, and we're going to see that about 3% for next year. And to go back to what Christine had mentioned, if we see a decline in new construction or if those assessed valuations go down, that could be very good for first-time home buyers because, you know, it might be more affordable. And then when those go on to the tax rolls, they would have a lower property tax bill. So property tax is abated, and we get asked this question a lot. So we try to include it whenever we do presentations or communicate with the public. For fiscal year '21, next year, in the general fund, we're looking at almost $31 million abated. And since 2006, so you can see that very small purple in 2006, after the legislative session enacted that tax cap in 2005, we're looking at over $262 million in the general fund. So that's just that cumulative value of all those purples. And for all funds, because any fund that receives property tax, so like I had mentioned before, those special revenue funds, they also have abatement that impacts what they receive, too. And so, just a reminder, and where we think we are going, we have not seen significant material or know of impacts for fiscal year '21. Fiscal year '22, we're just not quite sure yet. C-Tax, so this is where, for our estimates based on impacts to sales and use tax, where we anticipate seeing the highest level or the most impact. So fiscal year '20, year-to-date, we were going, we were doing pretty well. We had a 9.6% increase in C-Tax distributions over fiscal year '19. Now, with the estimates and looking at, you know, GDP and comparing GDP to taxable sales and looking at some of these other impacts that seem to be correlated, the estimate would be a negative 8.5% versus fiscal year '19 actual, so right around $106 million for C-Tax through the June 30 of 2020. And then the fiscal year '21 forecast is estimated right now to be a 29.9% reduction compared to fiscal year '19. And because COVID happens, you know, it happened to us, we, most entities or most economists and most people are using fiscal year '19 as a basis year. And so for us, we're looking at fiscal year '21's forecast being almost $90 million. So you can see it's very, it would be very close to absolute value of fiscal year '08, 2008. So very much reflective of the measures that were taken to get us through June 30, 2020. These are the fiscal measures that are included in the recommended budget. And some of those mitigation measures can be carried forward into future years. Some, like accessing stabilization, once you've done that, the stabilization's not there, cannot be carried forward. So the hiring freeze, purchasing freezes, CIP deferrals, and we'll talk about that a little bit when I, we talk about the CIP projects, contingency reduction and use of fund balance. And then we're also budgeting for personnel cost savings, however those might come about. Additional options, and so we don't know if this is going to get worse. We've heard, we don't know, maybe there will be a surge. If we're lucky, maybe there won't be. Or the prolonged impacts, whether, you know, permanently changes or for a period, long period of time, changes behavior related to travel and spending. We're not, you know, we're not quite sure at this point. We will get March's figures probably by Memorial Day week, so in a couple of weeks. And so we don't even have March's figures yet. And then those, and we saw those, and I think Commissioner Jung is probably painfully aware, that could, to respond to those, could take many additional measures. It could be countywide budget cuts. It could be countywide budget cuts, perhaps service reductions or closes of facilities or other personnel cost reductions. So those are not in this recommended budget, but those mitigation measures that are on that bottom, the bottom of this to the left, quantifies what those are. And so we can see $15.8 million use of general fund fund balance, $6.3 million to zero out the transfer to CIP for fiscal year '21 and that reprioritization, reduction of contingency budget to $750,000, so it's a $5 million reduction. The OPEB, reduction of OPEB contribution, and that's just that pre-funded portion. So still funding $17 million to go over for the actuarially determined contribution to make payments for next year's liabilities. And just net savings from vacant positions, which are kind of those just natural turnover, new positions and what those might be. And then an anticipated $5 million of personnel cost savings. And so with that, what does that look like for the general fund? It's a three, almost $356 million uses. We can see other is basically at zero, and other is any capital expenditures in the general fund. So a department has a capital budget, you know, $15,000, something like that, and contingency. So you can see when it's rounded, it's 0%. Transfers out are 11% of total uses, services and supplies at 17, and salaries and benefits at 72. And that is higher than the average over previous years, and that's because of total expenditure salaries and benefits are the largest portion based on the reduction to transfers out and the reduction to contingency and some of those other savings, saving And again, this is a different, this is like a sources and uses, different way to look at this or see it visually. We're looking at net 37, almost $37.5 million impact to revenues. You can see the majority of that is in consolidated tax. The other governmental, that represents, there's AB 104 Fair Share Revenue, I believe it's from 1991, and it's an SCCRT, which is a sales tax, the sales tax, and it's a separate distribution. It's called Local Government Tax Act, LGTA. And that's separate from consolidated tax, but it's, it gets impacted anytime sales tax is impacted or sales and use figures go down. And then we did account for, and fines and forfeitures, that's a reduction of revenue, if you will, to account for the possibility of not receiving property taxes. So delinquent property taxes. And then you can see in total expenditures, we have those net figures for salaries and wages, benefits, the OPEB, and then the transfers out that are reduced as well as contingency. And so that gives us that bottom-line figure of use of fund balance of almost $15.8 million, which would, for unrestricted fund balance for June 30, 2021, would be around $48 million or 13.6%. That's still within the board's policy level of 10% to 17% for unrestricted fund balance. And I think, I'm sorry, I did not have that memorized. And I believe that is 49 days of operating capital. And this is just an overview of the transfers out. So when we have those total uses in the general fund, what does that support? So we have support to the Health District, support to Indigent, the Indigent Fund, Indigent Services, Senior Services, Child Protective Services, Roads Fund for Roads Maintenance, Debt Service, so we have to transfer to make those debt payments. And then you can see that capital improvement at zero for next year. There are some new positions and position changes that are being recommended. They are all fully offset, so there's either been an expenditure offset or there's a different, there's a, there's a revenue source associated with it. And so this is high level. So within Tech Services, they are going to abolish a current vacant position to get into an agreement for Security Operation Center as a service for technology security, which obviously is very important. District Court, that is a net increase, which will be absorbed within their adopted budget to support the new family court judge. Alternative sentencing has a lab position that's being offset with revenue related to SOVER 24 drug testing. The homelessness initiative, being able to fund some positions to be able to support that, and that is being offset with marijuana fund revenues, so those separate fund revenues. Dispatch, now this goes back to the previous presentation of, and that's why it says contingent, is because we wanted to give ourselves the most flexibility to be able to, if something does move forward or the board makes a determination that we need those positions because we're not going to be in that agreement anymore, or that we have to stand up our own, those positions. We wanted to have them ready to go versus having to come back. And so again, that's based on being offset with revenues or other offsets, not additional general fund monies. The manager's office has a position, there were, there were two Truckee Meadows positions that were technically county positions when we had the transfer, or I don't want to call it that, but when Truckee Meadows stood up, quote unquote. And one of those people retired this fiscal year, so this is a bookkeeping to get that position off the books. Library is trading out a part-time and a full-time position to get another full-time position, so that net impact is a negative. And then a code enforcement officer for short-term rentals, that program moving forward. And again, that's going to be offset with permit. And asset management, that position is being partially shifted over to the Utilities Fund. So before COVID, I feel like I'm going to say that forever, before and after COVID, it's going to be kind of a timestamp, but we had 49.88, almost 50 FTEs requested for fiscal year '21. And these are changes for reclassifications. And again, these are all absorbed, these are all net zero, there's no additional funding associated with these positions. So, and some of them are net zero anyway, so you can see like a registrar of voters, it's a title change so they can move forward and get, when they do recruitments, it can be a little bit more specific to what they do at the voters. And then, because we talk about total appropriations, we talk about new positions in both other revenue funds as well as the general fund. So we can see that with the other funds, there was a request for fiscal year '21 of just slightly over 28 FTEs and a net 3.26 being recommended. And so Health District has four additional positions, and most of those are on clinical and epidemiology support. Truckee River, well, they all are either clinical or epidemiology support. Truckee River Flood Management, that's to abolish the deputy director. And that's the, in Public Works and Community Services Department, that's the Utilities Fund, that's the position that's, it's one position that already exists, but it's going to partially be funded by utilities because it supports those activities as well. And then very similar, we have reclassifications impacting nine incumbents for the other funds. And, sorry about that, I couldn't find my cursor. So that's kind of an abrupt, it wasn't a good segue. Are there any questions before we jump into CIP? There's only a few more slides.
No, Ms. Cook, let's continue through the slide. We actually have.
This is total CIP budget. A lot of times we get asked, you know, where are these budgets? And so there are separate capital funds, and so this is the pie chart view of that. Within 402, this is the fund that normally receives that general fund transfer. So we see that the net general fund support of projects in fiscal year '21 is 2.7 million. That's coming from the fund balance. So the CIP committee had recommendations going into '21 and then had to remate and reprioritize based on the impacts of COVID. So there are total deferred projects of $12 million and over $8.4 million in the general fund. So you can see that for the, these projects, when they're prioritized, it's health, safety, emergency, that, those types of projects are in there. And then in the Utilities Fund, they also have a capital budget and a capital plan. So you can see $41.2 million. The majority of this is related to the Stumm Morph Expansion that we're getting ready to close with the state on the State Revolving Fund Bond Funding, as well as, you can see the PVI Pleasant Valley Interceptor and affluent project, affluent programs. Parks Capital Fund, this includes carryover, so those remaining funds to finish those projects, so we have about $3.4 million. And then Roads Capital, and that's Roads Maintenance, those capital expenditures for roads, and Equipment Services Capital, and those are our ongoing replacement of fleet vehicles. So at $3.9 and $3.6 million respectively. So, given direction, we will come back next week. That will be the public hearing for the adoption of the final budget. And that's all for you.
Thank you very much, ladies. We appreciate the presentation this morning. Are there any, are there any questions by the commissioners? I know most of you have had most of your questions answered by the budget staff, but are there anything further at this time that you would like to add? I'm going to go to Commissioner Hartung, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Jung, would you, do you have any questions for staff?
Nope. Well done, staff and Mr. Manager.
All right. And I've seen none signed in from Commissioner Herman or Commissioner Vice Chair Bergbigler. So with that, I will look, is there any public comment signed in at this time?
There is no public comment, but I do need to make note that this will be placed on file with clerk.
Thank you very much. It will be placed on file with the clerk and be brought back for a public hearing next week on the 19th for, for a final approval and a public hearing. All right, we, at this time, I will just move on. Thank you for the presentation, and we will move. I'm going to make a quick adjustment here, being it's 12 o'clock, and I know Commissioner Hartung has a 1:00 PM that he needs to get to. We're going to move to 17. I'm going to take 17's public hearing right now and move into the public hearing for the tentative map subdivision for Pleasant Valley Estates. So, Mr. Manager, will you read us into 17, please?
Item number 17 is a public hearing, appeal of the denial of the, of the Washoe County Planning Commission of tentative subdivision map case number WTM 19-001 for Pleasant Valley
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Today we have, I know we have our Washoe County staff, Roger Pelham, who is available via Zoom. This is, and this is a, an appellate process, and usually through the appeal process, we allow the appellate to give a presentation. And for that appeal today, we do have John Kropotic joining us via Zoom. But before we jump into Mr. Kropotic's, I was just announcing who's here with us. Before we do that, we will go with Mr. Pelham's appeal to do the appeal presentation very quickly. So, Mr. Pelham, we're going to put your presentation up on this big screen. It is available now for us here in the, in the chamber. So, and Mr. Pelham, if you want to take us through, that would be great.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you, sir.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, sir. I will be asking for staff there to, to proceed with the.
Move the slides along for you?
Yes, indeed.
Thank you.
So the first slide we see simply shows the overall area in which this project is located. Next slide, please. This project is somewhat unique, this appeal, in that the applicant is requesting that the Board of County Commissioners consider a project that is actually different, has been modified from that which the Planning Commission considered. Next slide, please. The original project was for a 58-lot subdivision, and there were some restrictions in terms of roadway slopes and things of that nature. This is a hillside development, there are a number of slopes. Next slide, please. The current request has actually reduced the number of lots from 58 to 45. The minimum and maximum lot sizes have both changed. And again, they're only requesting 45 versus the 58 that was originally requested. 58 is the maximum allowable under the current zoning. Next slide, please. I'm looking at slide five here.
We got to.
Access to this subdivision has been problematic. That has been worked through primarily by the applicant. We can see the primary access coming in on Chans Lane to the south of the project, and access which will be created through Rocky Vista Road. That is an additional access but is not the minimum required, emergency access. The emergency access will be going west to Star Point Drive, I'm sorry, east to Star Point Drive. Next slide, please. This shows the current request, the configuration of 45 lots, again showing those three access points. Next slide, please. This map should be showing you a slope map. The red areas are steep, the green areas are essentially flat. Again, in that bottom right corner, that is to say the southeast corner, we do have some significant slopes. Those are primarily rock outcroppings, and those will be, if this is approved, included in open space area. Next slide, please. This does require grading in excess of major grading permit threshold. This requires a total of 231,000 cubic yards. Generally speaking, the grading as proposed at this time is consistent with Article 438 of the Washoe County Development Code, that is the grading code. Next slide, please. Article 436 of the Washoe County Development Code are street design standards. Initially, the primary access was really quite steep. That has been modified with this current, with the current request, down to about a 9% slope from a 12. And the slopes adjacent to the roadway were 2:1, that is too steep. They are now proposed at 3:1. Next slide, please. The, this shows the section of code which allows the county engineer to allow slopes up to 9% under certain circumstances. Next slide, please. The connection from Chans Lane through the proposed subdivision and out to Rocky Vista would provide access from the Toll Road area to the Roads Road area. And that is something that is desirable according to the area plan. Next slide, please. Again, this shows, this map shows again the three accesses that would be provided to the proposed subdivision. Next slide, please. This was heard by the South Truckee Meadows Washoe Valley Citizen Advisory Board in September of last year. The cap did voted to recommend denial based on concerns over, among other things, access primary among those being a bridge which accesses Roads Road from US 395 South. Next slide, please. When that was brought to staff's attention, we contacted the fire department. The fire department said, yes, in fact, that bridge is currently not acceptable for emergency equipment. And because it is not access to the proposed subdivision by emergency personnel, would take about 16 minutes. And the typical standard would be 10 minutes. That being the case, in preparation for this hearing, we do have some new comments from Truckee Meadows Fire. I'm sorry, next slide, please. Should be looking at slide number 17. This shows a, an overall map with a call-out showing from the subject site in relationship to the bridge at the intersection of 395 and Roads Road. The, next slide, please.
Mr. Pelham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hartung has a question for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, no, I'll wait until his, his, his presentation ends.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Continue, Mr. Pelham.
Thank you, sir. Slide number 18 should show three pages. Those are the current comments we have from Truckee Meadows Fire, and they are recommending that should this subdivision be approved, that each of those homes be required to include a residential spring system. Next slide, please. This project was public notice. This project was, public notice of this hearing was provided to 59 affected property owners surrounding the project. Those are at a distance of 500 feet, that is in accordance with state law and with Washoe County Code. Next slide, please. The project was reviewed by all relevant agencies. Conditions of approval have been included, should the board decide to approve the project. The next three slides show the findings required for approval of a tentative subdivision map, and we can just flip through each one of those. Each one of these and an explanation of staff's position on each finding are included in your staff report. And I know that we're, we're going to try to do this a little bit more efficiently, so I don't think I want to go through each one of those findings. What I would say is the Planning Commission was not able to make those findings, and I am, of course, bringing forward that decision having been made by the Planning Commission. And if we can proceed to slide number 25, we're getting to the recommendation. And there are several options available to the Board of County Commissioners at this point. The first of those options would be that if the board agrees with the action taken by the Planning Commission, you can simply deny the original and the revised project as brought forward by the applicant. Should you disagree with the Planning Commission, you could approve the original or approve the modified, that is to say, the new project. Should that be your course of action, conditions of approval have been included at attachment D to your staff report. And then finally, that was slide number 27, I'm sorry, slide number 28, you do have an option to remand back to the Planning Commission to consider, reconsider this new revised application. I hope that I haven't been too brief. There were a number of criticisms brought forward by the public, by the Planning Commission, and those really had to do primarily with the character of this subdivision in relationship to the existing development pattern around it, and again, with access. With that, I will conclude, and I am available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Pelham. All right, Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Pelham, the underlying zoning on this parcel is LDS, correct?
Partially. The underlying zoning includes several, including high-density rural, low-density suburban, and general rural. It is mixed zoning.
Okay, but in any of those zonings, equestrian uses are allowed?
Yes, equestrian uses are based upon the size of the parcel, not the zoning itself. Any parcel essentially greater than a half acre, you can have livestock animals such as horses.
Okay. All right, that, that of course concerns me, but I, I know that, that there's a lot of, of equestrian uses in, in the, in the general area. Why, and, and I'm not asking you to speak to the applicant directly, why wasn't this, as soon as the, the changes were made, I mean, this is highly irregular, why wasn't this immediately remanded back to the Planning Commission?
I would probably hesitate to answer that. That decision was made by management, and I know that the applicant preferred to bring it forward to the Board of County Commissioners rather than taking an amendment back to the Planning Commission. They have their representative, and I would really prefer that he addressed that, sir.
Okay, all right, well, let me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to legal. Mr. Wattsviel, are you, are you online?
Yes, I am.
So if, if this gets, if this gets approved, does it have to go back to the Planning Commission for affirmation, or does it just go straightforward?
No, it does not, it does not need to go back to the Planning Commission. The board has the ability to make a decision on whether or not you want to proceed with this today. One of the options that you would have would be to push it back down to the Planning Commission for them to make a recommend first, but you can proceed today if that's what you choose to do.
Okay, so, so let me ask you this. If, and I'll go the opposite direction, if this gets denied, what's the timeframe before the applicant can bring it back to the Planning Commission with a, a new project, or can they immediately, if we deny it, can they immediately remand it back to the Planning Commission and ask them to review the changes?
So you can, there's a couple of different things going on here. You can deny and remand it. If you deny it without prejudice, then they could take it directly to the Planning Commission. If you deny it with prejudice, then it'd be a one-year waiting period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Wattsviel.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Hartung. I've seen no other commissioner signing in right now for just questions, we will move on, I'm going to allow the applicant. Mr. Krompotic, are you with us?
Yes, I am, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, well, give us a second here, we're going to get your, make you a panelist, and you can share your presentation with the, on the screen, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, great, it's not fuzzy and all?
Nope, you're clear as to clear.
I'm on a, on a, you know, laptop microphone, which is not as clean as Bluetooth, as you know, but as long as you can hear me, then I think we're good. If somebody wants to run the PowerPoint, I'm really not feeling like a control freak today. It's as if, whatever matters, whatever works.
Well, we don't have it queued up, but we can queue it up, give it a second, we were, we were anticipating you sharing your, your screen via Zoom, but give us, give us a second here.
Of, of course, no worries.
Some technical difficulty here, hold on.
You know, I, I could start, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, and I, I mean, the PowerPoint is just, I think, about five or six slides.
Well, hold on, John, just give us, just give us one second, let us get it queued up.
Yeah, no worries.
And that way we can see.
I don't need them.
How are we looking back there, okay? Okay.
I would also like to mention that, that my name's John Krompotic, I'm representing the applicant who is Pleasant Valley Estates LLC also, and I let your staff know that I wanted to have our civil engineer, Jason Gillis, available as, I think what you call as a presenter. And not that he wants to present, but if there were any technical questions, just know that he is available.
Great. Jim?
Thank you.
John, as you know, usually for these appeals, we, we allow the applicant their 10 minutes for their, their presentation, so we'll, we'll give you your 10 minutes. Your presentation is now up on the screen, and you just, you just tell us when you want us to move forward, and then we'll go to questions right after that, okay?
Okay, and I would just suggest that I will, if, if I could reserve rebuttal time or whatever, because I just need...
Oh, absolutely.
A few minutes on, I don't, certainly don't need the 10 on the opener, thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely, you'll have ample time to rebut any discussion.
Just so I'm clear, Chairman Lucy, am I actually doing the down arrows? Is that how this is going to work then?
No, you're just going to tell us and we'll move it forward for you.
Okay, perfect. You go ahead and start.
Okay, you're on your first slide, sir.
I cannot see it, is it going to...
No, you're not going to be able to see it, because that was the only way, if you did it from your screen, would be the way you would be able to see it. So that was the challenge.
Okay, no worries.
But we can see it here, and, and so it's live in the chambers.
Actually, that's fine, I can see it, and then I'll have the hard copy in front of me, so it's all good, thank you.
Okay, all right.
So, in terms of the, the first side, what we're trying to show there, of course, the general vicinity, but what's important here is, and there's been a couple of comments in public about fire access and evacuation. The commission, I hope, would know and appreciate that what we're accomplishing here by way of establishing a couple of new easements. These are legal easements that go to the north via Rocky Vista, and also at Secret Pass, and then there's another one that you're going to see in a minute that goes over to Star Point. This enhances public circulation for anybody that needs to get in and out of there. We, we saw the fire memo yesterday, access, of course, is part of the overall set of issues here. So, simply wanted to point out that these are not legal accesses, this is all choked off as it sits today. It's what we're bringing forward by way of this tentative map that creates this overall circulation, north, south, in and out in all directions. Next slide, please. Commissioner Hartung asked a question about zoning. As you guys know, we have to play by the zoning, that is the law and the basis of what we come forward with in this business. And so basically, if you look, just generally speaking, MDS is the north half of the property, LDS is the south half, MDS allows 3 to the acre, and the LDS is 1 per acre. The blend of the zoning, and then you have the spattering of the MDR, which is .2 dwellings per acre, the sum of all that allows 58 lots. When I got involved as a response to trying to address the citizen issues on density and on lot sizing, I was fairly adamant and forceful with Mr. Fry about we need to lose some lots and make them entirely conforming to those zoning districts. That is 3 to the acre in MDS and 1, and then some softer on the perimeter. Next slide, please. So now you can see exactly what's going on by way of the map, lot size fit to the zoning. So this, you know, as, as you see oftentimes in Washoe County, we have a tool that we use to reduce lot sizes, clustering by way of common open space development. We're not doing that in this map. Again, it was a response to the citizens saying, can you be a little more compliant to the surroundings and, and to the zoning codes? So we gave our technical people the direction to make it exactly fit to the minimums in lot size and in dens, actually, in density, we're under it now by about 25%. The MDR, I, I think it's important for everybody to see, if you look on the west and the north and the east, we have the feathering on the perimeter so that we'll respect the lot sizes on those abutting properties. That's the idea there. Particularly to the east, you see very, very large lots. On the north, on the north half to the northeast, and also on the northwest part, we have some feathering of density. It's pretty typical in land planning when you have some adjacency concerns, so that's what we've tried to accomplish. And then the next slide. The, the, this is just the detail on, again, accomplishing the easements. You see the one that's Rocky Vista Ridge, which is a proposed roadway and maintenance easement that allows public access out there. There's one along the north property line that goes to the east, and then also the one on the east property, you see that 20-foot paved access easement that goes over to Star Point. That is not a benefit for just the project, it's enhanced circulation for everybody that lives in this area, and particularly for evacuation purposes. If I could touch on a few things that Mr. Pelham mentioned, the reason, and I, and I'd like to hopefully rope in some discussion about Commissioner Hartung, who had concerns about why it went back or didn't go back to PC. What we did, we asked for permission. First of all, we specifically addressed two issues pointed out by staff, primarily about character and about access. Staff had their own concerns, we heard them from citizens, we heard them at the CAB, and because we were making it entirely compliant with the Development Code and bringing it more in alignment with the, the citizen concerns, we said, we're reducing these number of lots from 58 to 45. We're now jiving more with the area plan and the master plan, and knowing that we've addressed that, is it appropriate to go on appeal to BCC? So that's why we're here today. We asked for that permission, staff thought it was reasonable, and here we are. I would also point out, and I don't know if Mr. Pelham did, it's always tough to get your footing a little bit when we're really living in an audio world here, which I'm absolutely grateful for, by the way, at least we can conduct business. But the two, the way I understand the staff report now, those things that were marginal in compliance with Development Code 436, 438, which was about grading and about access in roads, we are entirely compliant now. I don't know if Mr. Pelham pointed that out, and so that does affect staff's ability. The two findings that were hanging out there by way of the commission and the staff analysis have both been completely shored up in this softer redesign and how it interfaces with Development Code and with the community. I want the commission to know that we will be part of a big solution, and that is raised in the memo that was presented by the fire marshal or fire chief yesterday. I know about the bridge, it came up at Planning Commission. We're not the bridge problem, but we'll be part of the solution. It's an existing deficiency, as you all know. We have agreed to do our part, if that means a special assessment district, in funding for the bridge to enhance fire access, to enhance circulation, of which this project would benefit, we are 100% on board with that. I, I think that's important for the community to know, and important for you, the county commissioners, to know. Again, it was a little bit open-ended in the fire chief's memo yesterday. One of the options they talked about, and I just wanted to share it again with you, is fire sprinklers. If that is a mandate for the project, then we accept it. Every single condition that's noted in that memo, please know it as fact that we do accept that. About timing, just by way of, you know, if, if we were to earn your support on this, commissioners, this project, if it went at a very fast pace, and I don't know if there's any pace now, because it's almost impossible to understand the economics of land right now, it just is. But it's fair to say that in whatever market, this would be higher end real estate, and a fast pace would mean actual home construction is one and a half to two years out if we were to earn your support. And then, I don't know where I am on time, I am taking more time than I expected, but...
You've got about a minute and 15 seconds left, Mr. Krompotic.
Okay, thank you. By way of fact, we are entirely accountable to the rules and the process that's been put forth by Washoe County. This is a tentative subdivision map. The 10 findings are pretty tight, the two that were loose, I believe we've shored up, I, I would hope that Mr. Pelham would echo that. We meet specific policies in the area plan, all of the zoning standards in MDS, MDR, and LDS. With that, I'll leave it to you, Chairman Lucy, and be here for any questions. And please, if you have any for our civil engineer, Jason Gillis, he's with us as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Krompotic, we appreciate you joining us today, and Mr. Gillis. Being that this is a public hearing for, for the tentative map and the zone change, what we will do is go to, I'm going to open public comment. So our public comment period, obviously, we have had a number of public comments submitted. I have had 56 emails submitted to me via this issue, which I will forward to the clerk to have put on, placed on the record. But then I will have the emails that were submitted to the clerk and the voicemails. So we will start with the voicemails first. Madam Clerk, if we can go with Karen Logan, please.
Okay, and while she's queuing up for the record, the commission was given the reference document from the fire department, and it will be placed on file.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, can we play Ms. Logan's voice?
Hello, this is Karen Logan. I live at 1530 Willamette Road in Reno, Nevada. Willamette Road is off of Roads Road, which is also the road that Chanceline is off of, and I am calling about the Pleasant Valley Estates public hearing that's going to be tomorrow. We live in a very, this is, excuse me, this is a very rural, rural area. There are a lot of horse people, walkers, bicyclists that use Roads Road, and to access Roads Road, I mean, to Chanceline from Roads Road, it's, it's just not very feasible. It, it changes the whole atmosphere of the area, it makes, this is a rural area. Anyway, I'm not making very much sense, and I'm sorry, but... Anyway, I'm not making very much sense, and I'm sorry, but why can't Frye access his property off of Toll Road? That would solve his problem, and it would solve our problem, and it would be really important if this meeting could be held when we could all attend. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Can we play the next, which would be Roger Dauphinbach, please?
This is Roger Dauphinbach. I live on Willamette Road in Reno, Nevada. This is to the Planning Commission pertaining to the Pleasant Valley Estates. Their number is WTM 19001. And I am totally opposed to Frye's wanting to use Chance Lane as an egress, an entrance to his properties. Our road is a two-lane road that does not even have a white stripe down the middle. It's not safe to run at the speeds that people seem to be driving them at, and if we had another 50 households, probably another 200 cars a day coming up our road, it would be just a total, it would be a total mess. Our bridge, even if it gets, when it does get repaired, even if it gets widened, it will not be wide enough for more than, for two cars to go across comfortably. The people that go across the bridge when it was still functioning, many of these folks had no idea how to drive across the bridge. People going up Chance Lane would increase the traffic by, once again, by a very high amount. We just cannot have the problems that more automobiles, more people going up, more using Chance Lane would be just a terrible, terrible, terrible situation. Please do not pass this Pleasant Valley Estates question. Thank you very much. Goodbye.
All right. Next, we'll have Amy Haskell.
Hi, I'm calling regarding the, sorry, Jesus. I am Pleasant Valley Estates. My name is Amy Haskell, and this is for the Pleasant Valley Estate, Washoe County Commission meeting this morning. I apologize calling so late. It's Amy Haskell, 15875 Rocky Vista Road. And I bought my house two years ago. I was so ecstatic to get a house that wasn't near any developments, like all the other developments going on in Reno currently. I was so ecstatic to buy that house that overlooks the Washoe Valley, over Stagecoach, I mean, not Steamboat, and that valley. I was so ecstatic to buy my house and have a nice view, and then I get a notice that they're going to build within a half a lot away from my house. This is devastating to me. I'm sorry, but this is just really devastating, as I bought my house where it was because there was no developments there, and then you want to develop a half a lot away from me? I'm devastated, really devastated by this. I do not feel that it fits the area. It's quite a bit of buildings and a, more of a farmland with lots of horses and 30, 40-acre parcels, and then you're going to put in these houses with streetlights and all of the people that are going to come, and 100 new cars coming on Rocky Vista Road, and it's already a pothole mess, and you want to put another 100 cars going through there? I do not agree with it. I am totally devastated by all this, and it just really breaks my heart to see this, that you can't leave any, any place like Steamboat alone and just let it be the old Reno that it is, that I loved about it, that I bought there because of it. I didn't buy there for development, so I really do not agree with this development at all, and the roads do not accommodate it, the people don't want it there. Why can't they go somewhere else and build all these massive houses like the rest of Reno is being built out? When will the building stop? We have a lot of traffic already in Reno, and you want to put how much more on the roads? I mean, I think you need to be looking at that and quit building everywhere, all these huge apartments, and this is no different. It does not fit in this neighborhood, and I would appreciate it if you would not approve it, as it should not go in this neighborhood. Thank you very much. This is Amy Haskell at 15875 Rocky Vista Road. I'm at 530-525-1238, or my cell phone is 530-906-2446.
All right, thank you. All right, we will go to next, this is, we do have a few individuals joining us via Zoom. I'm going to jump to those individuals first. Ms., I think it's Peter Ross that is joining us, and so we will, Ms. Ross, if you are joining us via Zoom, we will unmute your mic, and you are able to speak. You have three minutes, ma'am. Ms. Ross, can you hear us? Peter Ross.
He's unmuted.
We have, we have you unmuted. Yeah, we can hear, we can hear you now.
Okay, so my name's Peter Ross. I live at 1185 Paddock Lane. I would request that you deny Mr. Frye's appeal with prejudice. He has repeatedly tried to sneak his plan through without letting the residents of Chance Lane and the surrounding areas sort of know. When he finds out that we do know, he pulls it. This is just one more attempt when no one can attend the meeting, that he thought, oh, I'll try and slip it through. As you've heard from the voicemails, it's a two-lane road, Rhodes Road. Chance Lane is a dirt road. We have a lot of flooding problems there. We have fire access problems. We have a bridge that has one lane, and for six months, it's had one lane, and because it's so unsafe. As I said, I would request that you deny this appeal with prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Next, I have Elizabeth Schuler, being us, joining us via Zoom. Ms. Schuler, we will unmute you, and you will be allowed to speak.
Can you hear me?
We can. Floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Schuler, and I live at 2215 Rhodes Road with my family. I am speaking today for myself and many neighbors who are uncomfortable with Zoom. We are requesting that you deny Pleasant Valley Estates with prejudice. I have spoken at the planning meetings previously about the flooding that will occur from this development, and I was able previously to present pictures and plans. When it rains in this area, the water floods south and then comes west into our area. Our neighbors come out with the tractors and protect the homes. There's going to be an awful lot of dirt moved if this development moves forward. They may be showing on the plans. They can take care of it with their retaining ponds, but they have not taken into account the neighbors in Steamboat Valley. Chance Lane is a place right now that the county announces, when it's raining, you can pick up your sandbags at the bottom of Chance Lane. If the developer moves forward, it's going to be a lot worse. They will be bringing into our valley traffic, flooding, and now for what I just heard today, they're offering we can also take on a special assessment to fix the bridge. We are not asking for that. We in our area understand what we live in. We like our rural area. We love our horses. We all ride every day, and we deal with it. This developer has planned and developed off of Toll Road previously. They should keep the access in that direction. We're not asking for it in this area. The fire department, they say, will be pleased with this. Really? They're asking that each home have a sprinkler system. We are not asking for any of this. The Planning Commission understood this was a transitional area, and this development is fraught with a lot of issues. Please, from all of the neighbors in Steamboat Valley, and there are a lot of us, they have written you and they have called you, please deny this appeal with prejudice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schuler. Next, I have Ms. Judy Coulter via Zoom. Ms. Coulter, do you hear us?
Hi, Curtis Coulter.
Oh, hey, Curtis, how are you? Curtis Coulter.
I'm well, thank you, and thank you for, commissioners, for taking this time. My name is Curtis Coulter. I live at 515 Rhodes Road. Ms. Schuler, who just spoke, is one of my neighbors. One of the things you may know, and I know that Commissioner Lucy is intimately familiar with the area, but the primary route to get to this development, this proposed development, is on Rhodes Road. To put 58 houses in this development going down Rhodes Road, you will pass less than 20 homes. It is a very rural environment. There are no streetlights, which we like. There are no sidewalks, which we like, and we like the environment consistent with the way it's been. If Dr. Frye would like to make the development consistent with the surrounding area, I think he would find a whole lot less resistant. One year ago approximately, there was a meeting before the county commission on one of the developments in the same area for Dr. Frye, and some of you may recall that there were a number of individuals, property owners, from one of Mr. or Dr. Frye's recent developments off of Toll Road, who were there complaining about all the promises he made to be part of the solution of problems that they had. He didn't follow through, and a lot of those people addressed the commission at that time. The density transfer that's going to occur, that's being requested, is essentially inconsistent with the surrounding properties. There'll be an isolated area of urban density surrounded by lower density, and that's inconsistent with what we have, even if there is a quote-unquote feather. The access will impose significant traffic, as I just said, on the small rural road, Rhodes Road. We've had, I've attended, Ms. Schuler's attended, many of our neighbors have attended previous cab meetings on this property, this development, and we've attended Washoe County Commission meetings on it, and each time, we've given the same statements. If you want to do something consistent with the neighborhood, with the community, you probably won't have the resistance, Dr. Frye, but if you want to go out and try to make this change and create an island of urban density within this rural environment, we're all going to stand together and say it's not appropriate. So I think what I'd like you to know is that we're not opposed to all development. We're just opposed to bad development and inconsistent development. If Dr. Frye wants to be part of the solution, then he should voluntarily withdraw this application and try to propose something that is consistent with the densities that we have. For those reasons and the reasons that I'm sure many people have sent by email, I request the commission deny with prejudice this application. We have been fighting this on almost a perennial basis for several years, and I think we'd really like to have at least a one-year rest from having another application, another cab meeting, another commission. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Coulter. All right. Next, I have Mr. Cliff Low via Zoom. Mr. Low.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. This is, for the record, Cliff Low, Washoe Valley, fellow resident of the South Valleys. I am also here offering public comment in opposition to this appeal, and I would encourage the commissioners to deny the appeal. And I would urge the commissioners to uphold the findings of the Planning Commission to which you nominated and approved the nominations of your Planning Commission, and uphold the opinion of the Citizen Advisory Board, again, people that were appointed by you. They have listed the reasons why they opposed this. Not all of those have been addressed in the amendments that were submitted today. Yes, the number of homes has been reduced by 58 to 45, but it still stands to change the character of this area, and I stand with my fellow residents of the South Valleys to preserve the character of our area. The commission has a fairly consistent record of overruling the Planning Commission in favor of developers. I encourage you not to repeat that. I spoke a short time ago with Mr. Bob Rusk. I believe you all know Bob, and Bob told me and gave me permission to convey this to you. He would be here, he would do this himself, but he's not into the Zoom thing. And Bob said, as a former, as a former commissioner, positions that you hold, that he looked this over, and he does not think that the situation warrants overruling the findings and overruling the opinion of the Planning Commission. So I urge the commissioners, this time, you have an opportunity to stand by the residents, stand by the taxpayers, stand by the citizens of Washoe County who already live here, and support them, and deny the appeal of this developer who wants to change the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Next, I receive, we, the clerk, received emails from the following individuals, all in opposition of the project and hoping, and asking for denial of the project. Those emails were submitted by Marilyn Naylor, William Naylor, Cheryl Erickson, Deborah Ribnick, Bill and Linda Bauer, Sonia Cuff, Erin Deutsch, Patrick and Lisa O'Sullivan, Delia Greenhall, Dawn Waite, Colleen Morissette, John Rhodes, Ginger Pierce, and Stephanie Larson. All of those emails that we received were in the opposition of the project and will be placed into the public record. The 56 emails that I received, all of them were in the opposition of the project, opposed to one where it was in support of the project, and those emails will be placed on the record with the clerk. So at that, unless I have any further public comment in regards to voicemail or Zoom, do I have any? All right. I see none. I'm going to bring it back to the board for discussion by the commissioners at this time. So with that, yes.
One just came on. It's Mr. Jeff Cuff.
I'm sorry. All right, hold on one second. We do, we do have another addition in regards to our Zoom emails. Mr. Jeff Cuff is joining us via Zoom. Mr. Cuff.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear, we can hear you.
Okay. So a couple other issues. There were new items presented today, and so the local residents don't even have a chance to respond to these. The other thing I don't understand is if they've met all the conditions of the Planning Commission, why they wouldn't just return to the Planning Commission and get that approval? There are items that were somewhat glossed over here, like the access on Chance Road, the slope of the 12%, which basically was never addressed. There were mitigation issues that could address it to 9%, but they never said that that road slope changed from the 12%. The other thing is the additional access from the other roads. They show access to the development, but they don't show it in the development. And in one of the statements, it was said that one of those accesses would have a lock gate, so I don't see how those issues help mitigate the Planning Commission and the cab's comments. That's, those are the points I wish to make.
Thank you, Mr. Cuff. We appreciate you. Thank you for joining us via Zoom this morning. I know this is a very challenging time for individuals, and I, this is not, this is very unprecedented for this commission to address issues like this. I want to assure all those that are joining us, either via TV or phone or Zoom, that all commissioners have been briefed with staff on this item, specifically to address all of the issues that were provided and the changes, the substantive changes that have been provided to us in our staff report. At this time, I'm going to bring it back for further discussion of the board. Now, for board questions, are there any board questions at this time for either the applicant or the appellant, I mean, the appellant or staff at this time? You know, I have a couple of questions. I do have a question. I have concerns with this. I have, I have always been a, as many of you know, a strong advocate for I have always been, as many of you know, a strong advocate for smart development within our community, for continued growth that would be justified. However, as I believe Mr. Coulter pointed out, this is one of those developments that I don't feel is smart development. This is not adequately addressing some of the needs of the housing within our community in regards to high-end housing. This is not addressing the needs for access, which I still have challenges off of. Initially, they proposed that this go down Toll Road, and now they are proposing this go down Rhodes Road. Rhodes Road is a challenged road at best, two-lane road, very much a country road that would need a significant amount of improvement to allow for 54 new homes to that area. The slope up, we've heard from a number of people, the flooding off of that hillside is very real and very challenging down to what we know as Browns Creek or Big Creek. So in some of those, and so when you have the Big Creek ditch and you have Browns Creek, that are our major off-runs from the Washoe Valley area down through, I have some real challenges with that when we start doing some grading up on that hillside that would put a number of those homes down in the valley at greater risk. I don't feel that there have been substantive enough changes just with changing the amount of dwelling units from 58 down to 46 to be significant enough, in my opinion, as changes to the plan that I would feel comfortable moving forward with this plan at this time. I think the access, the fire access, the private road that would move off of, I believe it's, let's see here, would move down off into Ridge Star. Ridge Star Pass, that, to me, is challenging at best, or Star Point Drive. I don't think those individuals had planned on a road to facilitate also. So from my standpoint, I don't see enough substantive chances that these things have been addressed in this, these changes, and the slope issues that have been brought up. The fire challenges are still those that I'm challenged with as a number of things. I just don't feel that this is a smart development that adequately addresses what this commission has tried to do year in and year out, is to provide smart housing that is close to services, that is close to access, that is allowed for continued growth, that's smart growth within our community. This puts a lot of onus back onto the county if improvements are needed to be made and challenges that unforeseeable that could be catastrophic down the road and in challenging financial times such as this. I don't feel that these are really, this is inadequate or smart development that I would be able to support. So those are my comments at this time. Any other comments by any of the commissioners? I don't have the commissioners here in the chamber signed in. Commissioner Hartung?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I couldn't agree more. We find ourselves in very challenging times. I too am concerned with the unintended consequences of these kinds of developments. And I'm also a little dismayed that when this developer decided to make some changes, that they wouldn't have directly remanded it back and said, okay, look, let's try to appease the planning commission's concerns, and yet they just pressed on. And so I would make a motion that we deny with prejudice.
Okay. I have a motion, but I'm going to give the opportunity to the appellant for any rebuttal based upon commissioners' discussion. So I do have a motion. And before I take a second to that, Mr. Kimpotic, are you still there?
I am, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We do have a motion on the floor for, but do you have any questions you would like to say to appeal this, or to rebut any of this discussion that's had thus far today?
You know, I'm not with Mr. Fry. Of course, he makes the decisions. We've talked a bit in preparation for this, not knowing where it was going. I would like to ask the commission to give us the option to take it back to PC and to make more changes. Maybe we can get there with staff, planning commission, and the citizens. That's the idea.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kimpotic.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Kimpotic, I have to say, Mr. Fry, we've asked Mr. Fry a number of times with these developments out there to work with the community, to come back with viable projects. I can't tell you how many times I've had meetings with Mr. Fry and the consultants that he's had in previous, that these changes needed to be subsequent and substantive, and subsequently what the general public in the surrounding area would approve of. Those have never been addressed. And time and time again, it's been brought to this board for appeal, looking for a different answer. And I, even though I would appreciate your request, at this time, I feel that I'm going to support moving on with denial with prejudice at this time. So I would second the Commissioner Hartung's motion for denial with prejudice. And so I have a motion and a second for denial with prejudice and move on from this. I'm going to call for the vote at this time, since I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with all commissioners voting for denial, and we will move on. Thank you for everybody joining us today. We appreciate that. All right. We are moving back now, Mr. Manager, to item 14. 14, thank you, sir. Item 14.
All right. So item 14 is the second reading of ordinance 60 for the Truckee Meadows Fire to be read by the clerk.
So this will be ordinance 1650, previously, ordinance number 1650, previously bill number 1838, and ordinance amending the Washoe County Code by repealing chapter 60 in its entirety and by enacting a new chapter 60 concerning fire, buildings, and wildlands containing provisions of the 2018 International Fire and Wildland Urban Interface Codes with modifications and violations and providing other matters necessarily connected there with and pertaining thereto.
All right. Any discussion on this public hearing? Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is not.
All right. Anybody from Zoom joining us that would like to comment on this? This is the second reading. I am now looking for a motion to approve and adopt the ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
And Madam Vice Chair.
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 1650, amending the Washoe County Code by repealing chapter 60 in its entirety and by enacting a new chapter 60 concerning fire, buildings, and wildlands and containing provisions of the 2018 International Fire and Wildland Urban Interface Codes with modifications and violations and providing other matters properly relating thereto, and the effective date should be June 1, 2020.
All right. I have a motion second. I have a second from Commissioner John. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 15.
Item 15 is the first reading of ordinance for reclaimed water use rates to be read by the clerk.
All right. Madam Clerk.
This is bill number 1839, an ordinance revising the Washoe County requirements and schedule of rates and charges for reclaimed water service within Washoe County by temporarily reducing reclaimed water use rates by 50% for the 2020 irrigation system with retroactive effect by adding a provision to temporarily reduce future reclaimed water use rates by resolution of the Board of County Commissioners by changing the physical address of the county's operating office and other matters properly relating thereto. This ordinance amends ordinance number 1535 with a second reading on May 26.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would propose to introduce bill number 1839 with a second reading and adoption on May 26, 2020.
All right. I have an introduction. Do I have any public comment on this, Madam Clerk?
There is not.
All right. Seeing no public comment, seeing no public comment from Zoom. We are introduced. All right. Mr. Manager, we are on to item 16.
Item 16 is a public hearing and first reading to change boundaries on groundwater remediation to be read by the clerk.
All right. Madam Clerk.
So, Mr. Chairman, there are two first readings in this item. The first one will be bill number 1840, and ordinance amending ordinance number 1,000 in order to change the boundaries of district number 24 groundwater remediation and providing other matters relating thereto. And a second reading will be scheduled for June 16.
Okay. That's item 18, bill 1840. Now, is there a second bill number there?
The second bill, do you want to introduce them separately or together?
Well, introduce them together.
Okay. The second one is bill number 1841, an ordinance imposing a fee on parcels of land in Washoe County, Nevada, district number 24, groundwater remediation to pay the cost of developing and carrying out a plan for remediation and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
And Madam Vice Chair.
I would move to introduce bill number 1840 as detailed in the staff report and as just read by the clerk, and bill 1841, the same, and the hearing with the possible adoption, second reading and possible adoption hearing dates of June 16, 2020 for both.
Thank you, Madam. And those who have been introduced, do we have any public comment?
There is no public comment.
Seeing no public comment on the public hearing, we will move on, and those bills have now been introduced into the record. All right. Mr. Manager, that concludes all of our business for today. Let's go to our final public comment for today. That would be item 18, sir.
Item 18 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that would be made to the commission as a whole.
All right. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments signed in during the meeting? All right. Do we have any public comment from Zoom? All right. I'm going to ask, wait just a brief second and see if anybody signs up, raise their hands. One twice closing public comment. All right. Seeing no public comment via Zoom. We are on to item 19. Mr. Manager, anything further you would like to report this afternoon for managers' or commissioners' announcements?
There is, there are two items. One, I want to apologize to the folks at Aaron's Furniture. I misstated earlier. They actually donated 340 mattresses, not 40 mattresses, as I said. We want to thank them again for their generous donation to our place. And to follow up on Commissioner Burke Bickler's request, we'll schedule a staff report to update the public on Wild Creek and provide an update. As many may know, during the governor's closure of golf courses, the operator decided to stop operating there, and the county has actively been looking into solutions. And I will tell everybody, with full disclosure, as a golfer, I hate to see a golf course closed, but we have to be good stewards of the public asset. So that's all I have this afternoon.
All right. Commissioner John, Commissioner Hartung, do you have any final comments?
Sure.
I do.
Okay. Commissioner John.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Commissioner Hartung. So, just a quick plug for Aaron's Furniture, a locally owned and operated facility. I know a bunch of us are transitioning and working from home with our spouses and in need of creating our own, at least this commissioner is in need of a lot of her own space and a door that closes behind her. And that also includes cleaning up an old office of mine and sprucing it up to my liking. And Aaron's Furniture, Aaron's Furniture will be the first place I call when I start really raising some cane in the John household. For announcements, we need to remind any of our presenters, appellants, or anybody that's on our agenda, they need the technology and the preparation to do their presentations. And let's make sure we're posting that and giving a lot of good information for our presenters so that they aren't stymied by the learning curve that we are all experiencing right now. And I think that is all. Just remember, especially to our staff, which is over 2,000 FDE, we're in this together, and we're going to do everything we can to make sure staff maintains their wonderful middle-class status and is able to afford to pay their mortgages, their rent, their car payments, and even a new general services tax if that becomes necessary. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner John. Thanks for joining us today. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we've all known that ducking back out of the agreement that they had with us, which is okay, what I'd like the manager to do is, and of course, if we can't find someone who can run the golf course without any additional funding, what are our options? Can we turn that land and deed restrict it into a regional park? It would be a wonderful, wonderful regional park. So if our options, rather, are short, let's look at all the possible options, but I do not want to see that land sold for any type of development. And I know that it's zoned as PF or public facility, but at the end of the day, zoning can be changed, and so we need to restrict that property and keep it for the public use. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartung. Commissioner Herman, do you have anything final? Commissioner Burke Bickler. One last comment I'd like to make. I did have conversations, I did receive an email that potentially that we will be working on with the Governor's Task Force, the LEAP Local Empowerment Advisory Panel, again, on future plans for gyms, estheticians, and different massage therapy, body art, all those have been discussed. And I remind people, yes, they are still closed during Phase 1, but the governor has assured us that he will continue to look at our numbers to make sure that we're working, going in the right direction, and that we can work with his staff to address how we move to Phase 2. But please remember that. Stay safe, to stay open. We thank you for joining us today. Have a great rest of your week. Be humble, be out there, shop local, and thank you very much. We adjourn very, ladies and gentlemen.